Are up to the annual plan, but look, I might just do a couple of other things before, before we get to the annual plan and then that will allow others to hear what I had to say at the outset in terms of process. We've had some good advice from the auditor this morning about process, so I do want to make sure that we get the process, process right. So what's the next item after the annual plan? Number six, Chief Executive's Report. Have you one?
I'll take it as read. I just want to let those councillors know that I haven't spoken to, that the City Council put in a team into the Solgum Management Challenge. So it's a developmental challenge where people from across the organisation come together and do a whole range of things, seven tasks, including debate and a process improvement project, a range of other issues. Out of 16 teams across New Zealand, Christchurch is now one of the three finalists. So the winner will be announced at the gala dinner on the 14th of April and the winner goes to the Australasian Management Challenge. So it's a great thing for Christchurch to be recognised, it's about working together, it's about an experience of on your feet, really managing some challenging issues and I think recognition of the work that staff put in, in terms of, and the progress that was made over time. So we're absolutely delighted about this.
Good luck.
Any other questions for the Chief Executive? Yanni?
Yes, thank you. Just on the operational results, page 27, you make reference to higher NZTA operational subsidies. I just wondered if we'd had any update on the subsidies related to the accessible transport, stages two and three from NZTA?
We haven't had any specific response on that.
Do you...
We applied for any? I think we're still under discussions, but there has been no confirmation.
So we've got projects like Victoria Street, which are in the current financial year, and I was just wondering whether that increase was related to those projects in stage two that we'd committed to. But is it possible to get some information back around what the NZTA subsidies?
We can do that.
Cool. Thank you.
Paul?
Just a couple of things, the Snap Send Solve. I did quite a few when I was out on a walk with some areas that were of concern and I had one of the contractors come back to me and ask me exactly where the problem was. So I said, well, there's a GPS coordinate that comes with the Snap Send Solve, but apparently that's not getting passed on to the contractor, so...
It's not all contractors. So there are some areas where the technology is a bit older and so we're working through that, but there are some contractors where it does go through too. So it's about consistent systems across.
The second thing was just an emerging problem, I think we've raised it before, but it is going to become sort of quite critical coming up and it's the Building Control Group doing end-to-end process, which has been working exceptionally well. And a thought's come around, maybe a start-to-finish type approach, which looks at not just getting the building and all the things that wrap around that service, but actually looking outside the building and going, what else needs to be done? Let's take public realm for example. So making sure the public realm around some of these new builds, which have been quite heavily damaged by the earthquake, are actually sort of coordinated in with those projects. So a start-to-finish approach would actually assist, I think, in the long run. And we saw, you know, down here off the street where Nick Hunt's building got finished and the paving hadn't been sorted. We ended up putting down bitumen just to stopgap the process, but if we'd been on to it, we would have actually got the paving down as it should. So I'm just thinking maybe we need to look at that going forward.
Yeah, I agree. So there is some work in terms of how do we align some of our work across, you know, not just the rebuilds, but the other areas of work that we're doing as well. There's also, I guess, the issue about prioritisation and how we fit that into the process. But certainly we want to be able to complete areas as much as possible, rather than sort of coming back and patching up.
Yeah, that's pretty part of the concern for some of these big developments, where you've got a $100 million development and outside you have, you know, some of the pavers that were, you know, at the day when they finished the city mall, for example, say they were nice, but now you've got pavers missing and they've got bitumen filled in the gap, so it doesn't look that great.
No, I know. And we're now structured in a way that we can do that more easily, so that we have that communication across what we previously, you know, brought silos.
Awesome. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Only one question on page 31. The project host was gave the recreation park. Based on the consultation document, the Victor Wiggman Committee Board were made decision on 19th of April, you know, this is public, but right now here is the 17th of May. So whether before the public or committee are aware or not?
Of the decision being made?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm not sure about that.
But there's public, the consultation document was on the 19th of April.
Yes, so that information will be fed into the board decision on 17th of May.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just one really little question, and it's on page 26 in the first line, again on 27. We talk about operating expenditure tracking below budget, and then you say capital expenditure remains at risk. Do you mean at risk of being under spent or?
Yes, so as we've been forecasting all the way along.
That's fine. Just, Andrew?
Thank you. On page 28, there's the right-hand side of the page that refers to the Littleton Library Project. I'd just like to take the opportunity to record the community's thanks, in fact, to library staff, who did a fantastic job in this space, working with community members and the community board in that working group. It's a really good example, in fact, an exemplar of the way that council and community can work together to deliver a really good outcome that otherwise wouldn't have occurred. So inasmuch as it's in your report, I just wanted to take the opportunity to record the community's thanks to the staff for the work that they did in that space.
Right. And equally, certainly library staff have talked to me about the way that they value the input of the community, but also the volunteers who actually help give some things like that.
It was a really good collaborative process between staff, community board and community. The Littleton Time Bank played a role in the actual physical moving of the stock. Yeah, certainly it was a pleasure to be involved with and I look forward to seeing more similar collaborations happen in future. Thank you.
Very smart move to use the Chief Executive's Report.
David?
Three quick points. One, just reinforcing Paul's comment about Snap Send Solve, just the GPS, number of people telling me that they can't find it. Secondly, just on our levels of service performance, tracking at 86%, it's an area of some concern in the eastern suburbs. Have we been realistic in our setting of targets or are we trying to achieve more than we're capable of?
So we have a large numbers, a number of levels of service and the executive team are looking at how do we hone those down to the things that really matter in the next financial year. So there's quite a lot of work around that. I think some have been heroic targets, others are we're required to comply with. So they're, if you like, essential core targets. So for instance, it may be around non-contamination of water or E. coli and if you, you need to be 100% is the target. If you, so if you have one outbreak, then you failed target entirely. So there are a whole range of issues around the targets, which we're looking at. What's, what are the things that we should be measuring? What are the things that we are required to comply with and are imposed on us? And what are the things that we would want to know to make good decisions?
Yeah, and I think perhaps we could add another factor into the equation. We seem to have in some instances a one-fits-all model of level of service-
That's right.
-that doesn't take into account differing conditions, environmental bits and pieces, and we're trying to adapt one model across the whole city. And I think we need to be looking more site-specific in some areas. And that's, that's an issue that people in the east are raising with me at the moment. And lastly, just on the health and safety, page 35, a great schedule there, and I wonder, I'd just like to see a little bit more elaboration. Maybe it's something that could come to regulations and consents or another committee, but we have, you know, quite a number of near misses, first aids, and we've had a couple of notified problems. And I'm just keen to see whether there are any particular sections of council that are at risk more so than others, and any trends that may be evolving across the broad spectrum of activities that we engage in. So maybe we either expand this a little bit or there's a more expansive report comes to one of the committees, and I'm happy to receive it.
Yeah. This is an evolving area in terms of reporting for us, so we're trying to get the foundations right. And as you know, we had an audit that actually looked at our readiness for the new legislation. So we're doing a whole lot of work in place to make sure that everything's in place. But that other areas such as the executive team look at the detail every month. We've got established committees throughout the organisation and we actually want to see things like near misses reported more. So as one of our plan-on-a-page objectives, a key one is looking after ourselves and looking after each other. And the expectation is that things like that will call out risks and issues and incidents, so that we can start to address those. And of course, under the new legislation, we're also interested in looking at our contractors and anybody that comes on any of our sites, to making sure that we reduce any risks there as well. So you'll see increased reporting. There is, we need to report to the whole of council in some way. So whether there's a part of a report in my report and then to one of the committees in more detail, that's a discussion I think we need to have.
Great. Would someone like to move that the report be received? Jimmy Chen seconded Andrew Turner. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, that's carried. It's good timing now to come back to the, to the annual plan. I just thought that I'd just say a couple of words at the outset around process for dealing with the draft annual plan. And I guess as agreed, due to the significant amount of work that we've already done and workshops and staff have gone away and worked on for us, this morning the council will debate the proposed annual plan and amended LTP. But I have to say, we have to get the form right in order to comply with our friends at the, at the Office of the Auditor General and their representatives here in Christchurch. So this means that when we, when we have decided on any amendments to the annual plan and/or amended LTP, we need to take a break. And this break is really required for our finance team to analyse the impacts of any changes and communicate and discuss these with Audit New Zealand. So we're going to have two breaks during the course of this part of the meeting and I'll come back to that, the second one, the first one after this. If Audit New Zealand are satisfied that there are no significant or material changes, then they will be able to receive what's called the letter of representation, which has already been signed by us, and produce their audit opinion. We could then attach the audit opinion to the consultation document and council can formally resolve recommendation five, which is to approve and adopt the consultation, the consultation document, including the Audit New Zealand report. I think it's wise that we avoid changing the consultation document, if we can possibly do that. As changing that will mean Audit New Zealand will need to re-evaluate it, or re-validate it really. In respect of the order of proceedings for today's meeting, the council needs to adopt the information that is relied on by the content, relied on by the content of the consultation document and which provides the basis for the amendment before the council adopts the consultation document. We are reminded that we need our own legal advice, so Ian Thompson will be at the ready, to satisfy itself that the adoption processes comply with the strict requirements of the Local Government Act 2003, but it's 2002. Section 93G, information to be adopted by local authority in relation to long-term plan and consultation document. Before adopting a consultation document under section 93A, the local authority must prepare and adopt the information that A is relied on by the content of the consultation document adopted under section 93A, and is necessary to enable the Auditor General to give the reports required by section 93C4 and 93D4, and provide the basis for the preparation or amendment of the long-term plan. So that is why we'll need to take two breaks in the process, so that any proposed resolutions can be vetted by our legal advisers as well. That being said, we did call for advice on amendments that councillors proposed, and for the purposes of the debate, the following amendments can be assumed will be moved. A re-profiling of the head-to-head walkway, returning Manuka Cottage to the program, bringing forward Walston Pool site investigation. And in terms of fees and charges, no fee increase in funeral plot burials for full-size plots for a further 12 months while further investigations are taken, increasing Hagley Park car park fees paid to CCC to cover costs, and removing reference to childcare facilities at Pioneer Early Learning Centre, which personally I think is an error and a mission, and could have been dealt with that way. We provided overnight information on other matters which were not supported by staff recommendations, but we have asked for analysis to be undertaken, which can be fed into the process. This is a draft and we're going out to public to invite their feedback. So the process will be just a brief opening statement from me, and I will formally move the resolutions as they sit on the, on the agenda. But with the, yeah, but with the view that we will take a break after the debate and we will get the resolution into the final form, we will then have a debate with councillors, participating up to five minutes each, and then we'll take that first break, deal with any proposed amendments, agree a position on amendments subject to finance clarification on impact, and then the second break will occur while they undertake all of the work that they need to undertake and to communicate with audit. But at that time, council business can continue, so we can move back to other items on the agenda and we can come back to the voting on the draft annual plan. Finance will then be able to provide detailed assessment of changes and any required updates to the recommendations of supporting information, and finance will have a discussion of the impact of these with Audit New Zealand. If that is immaterial in Audit New Zealand's opinion, the council resolutions will able to be approved at that point. So the reason I wanted to spell that out in some detail is that, you know, sometimes we think that it would be a good idea to move an amendment at this stage in the process, and I guess that the risk is, is that then that requires audit to go back through an analysis of the impact and actually either require a full audit review or review the council position on amendment. So I'm just making that clear, that this is at the beginning of a process, that it is a draft that's going out for public engagement. All of the community boards will be invited in to make their detailed submissions based on community engagement that they will be undertaking. So there is quite a long way to go. At the point that we have a resolution carried that satisfies those requirements, then we continue through the balance of the meeting and then we take a break for Easter. So, right. So on that basis, could I, you know, formally move the resolution as set out on the audit paper for item number four? Five? Five. Am I doing it? Twenty-six? Just, I'm looking at it in front of me, but I can't see.
On page, page five.
Can't see what.
It's number two, page five.
Item twenty-six, isn't it? Yeah, item twenty-six. Right. Item twenty-six. So I'll move the staff recommendations, but that is for the purposes of the debate and that's seconded by Fiki Buck. So I'll just make, I only want to make a brief introductory comment because I'll speak at the, at the end. I think that, for me, where we've got to with this draft plan is very much what we said we'd do at the conclusion of our long-term plan process last year. We said that we would go back and review the capital program and we did. We brought in an external advisory committee, an expert advisory committee. It was interesting, a comment was made in the media the other day about the amount of the cost of that. All of the people that contributed to that donated their time because they felt that it was important that they assisted the council with that external review. And I think bringing fresh eyes to a council organisation has been an extremely positive process, and I would like to acknowledge and thank Roger Bridge, Gary Moore, Corin Bolstad, Bob Lyne, and the Sarah and Skirt officials that joined with them in order to undertake that analysis. And I'd also like to acknowledge that the Chief Executive also played a very important role by bringing in an external person into the council as part of a, really a priority setting, well, somebody who was capable of helping the organisation lead what is in fact a priority-setting process. And that has been incredibly helpful as well and provided a very strong but important interface between governance and management. And I feel absolutely confident going forward that as an organisation, we are going to be able to budget for what we can deliver and where we can bring projects forward because they are ahead of schedule. The money will be there to be brought forward to enable them to be delivered. And I couldn't have said that one year ago, but I feel like I can say that today. So I really think the organisation does need some recognition for what has been an extraordinary shift over a very, very short period of time. But this is exactly what we said we'd do. We knew that when we went out for consultation on the long-term plan last year, that we were going to have an enormous challenge over the, over explaining to people that the only things that we could put in our plan were things that we could substantiate to the Office of the Auditor General. And that meant that we had to be able to put in, put in the value of our assets because we knew that we would have to be able to rely on it. We couldn't put the insurance settlement in because we didn't have the insurance settlement. We did put an assumption, but actually that assumption has proven to be lower than the amount that we've actually received from our insurers, and that has put us in a much better financial position than we were 12 months ago. We also have settlement with the Crown over the horizontal infrastructure. I wouldn't describe myself as particularly happy with the result, but it is what it is and it is a result. It's confirmed, it's settled. It's, that's, that's the position that we have ended up in. And what that means is that we can go ahead with confidence, knowing exactly what our financial position is. And when I reflect on the first annual plan that we did, sitting around this table, having been elected in October 2013, and not knowing what our financial position was, not realising how much had been signed up to in the cost-sharing agreement, and in fact, not realising all of the hooks that were in that cost-sharing agreement until we were elected, and then finding out that the insurance recoveries hadn't progressed fast enough, and then finding out that the horizontal infrastructure spend had been grossly overestimated by our own organisation. You know, all of those things, and then finding out subsequently that standards were changed in a way that didn't represent, in my view, the best practice of working collaboratively together on a solution, rather than one party taking a position and adopting it and advising the other party. So we've had a, we've had a hugely challenging two-and-a-bit years, but we've come a long way. And I don't want to underestimate the strength of an organisation that has managed to turn itself around in such a short period of time. So that's all I wanted to say by way of introduction. This is the plan that we said that we would introduce after our long-term plan, and it is in a much better space than it was. We are in a much better space than we were. We've managed to lower the rates increase to a cap of 5% for the next three years. We've managed to spread our capital program, not, not so much that it places our, our infrastructure at risk, but actually puts us in a better place so that we can prioritise and bring forward projects as and when they are able to be delivered, rather than a wish and a prayer, which is the way that we have done things to a certain extent in, in the recent past. So...
Did you want to move these amendments?
Oh, yeah. Well, the, the suggestion is, is that I move the amendments and notes at the same time, so that they're all dealt with in the, in the same resolution. But obviously we'll still take the break after the, after the debate. So, well, rather than, rather than ask people to put up their hands, I'm just wondering if we should just go around the table?
It's just a procedural question.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right. I was waiting on others, but I do take responsibility for the lateness on ultimately my two amendments. I have had staff advice in the positive, so I'd like to ask whether I could put those two amendments over Danelle and Wainoni. I've had a conversation with Andrew and-
Yep.
-there's more insufficient confidence to-
They're included in the notes.
Yes, they're not committing us at cost right now, obviously, but to investigate.
Yeah, they're not. They will be included in the notes, is the advice that I'm receiving?
Thank you very much.
They will be. Yep. Andrew?
Thank you. I note the head-to-head walkway amendment, and I'd just like to get a little bit of further information on that, if I can, around a level of certainty that if there is work that can be done in the next financial year, that we will bring those funds forward in order to enable that work to be done. Because my understanding from staff is that there is sufficient work to be done in order to, to spend the budget that originally was in the long-term plan for that year. So I'm certainly interested in the rationale for pushing funds out, when my understanding is that the work is actually able to be done as planned. So what's the reason for pushing that out in view of the fact that I'm being advised by the staff closest to the project that they can deliver?
So we're going to debate the whole thing. We'll come back to the amendments when we, when we get to that part of the meeting, but we need to have an adjournment and sort out the detail of the amendments.
So what, so the opportunity to question around the amendments comes when?
Probably after the break. We're just going to debate the entire, you know, the CD and the financial strategy and the-
Okay, so this is debate and then questions come after?
Yeah. We agreed this earlier in the week, that we would, to structure the day, that we would debate the going out to consultation on the annual plan and the amended LTP. We wouldn't have a consultation document if we weren't amending the LTP. We would just be having an annual plan process. The consultation document arises because we're amending the LTP. The consultation document arises because we're amending the LTP as a result of the review of the capital programme. So that's really the, that's the nub of what we're going out to consult on.
So from a process point of view, we're debating first, then raising questions, and if there are further amendments, they'll be put at that second stage as well?
If the amendments need to be tidied up, then they can be tidied up for then. But I set up as moving them just for the sake of getting the debate going.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, so apologies for my misunderstanding.
No, that's right.
So from a debate point of view, the most notable part of this annual plan, as has been said, is the changes that it makes to the long-term plan, and in an environment where we've got a far greater level of certainty than we had this time last year when we were putting out the long-term plan for consultation. The insurance is now settled, we've got certainty around historical, around the horizontal infrastructure, but more particularly, the review of the capital programme has taken place. And I'm really pleased that, as a council, we've been able to respond to the concerns that were expressed by some at this time last year regarding the deliverability of a large capital programme, some would say an impossibly large capital programme. And the work done by the Capital Review Working Group has really informed this, along with a lot of work that's been done by staff and advice from staff as well. And that means that we've now been able to take a far more realistic view of the capital programme and its deliverability. And not only are we able to do that, we actually have done that. We've really interrogated that capital programme and looked at where things can and cannot be delivered. And the thinking is certainly not around whether we can afford to deliver, it's whether we actually are capable of delivering. So whether there are consenting issues that might delay a project, or whether there are capacity to build issues that might delay a project, or where indeed there's an opportunity to consult with the community that needs to be taken, which may mean that a project isn't able to be delivered in line with its some original timelines. I'm pleased to see that there remains a strong commitment to provision of community facilities and rebuilding of community facilities, and I'm particularly pleased to hear that there remains flexibility within this budget to bring funds forward to meet the community expectation and to meet community demand for facilities, if it turns out, in fact, that we are able to deliver more quickly than we're anticipating we can in the work that's been done with the plan. So, in short, I think it's great that we are fully committed to continuing to deliver community facilities, to delivering a good standard, an equitable standard of roads and footpaths throughout the city, and that we're doing that in a far more realistic way that ties in the capital programme as it appears on paper with what's actually capable of being delivered. There is, of course, a link between that and the financial strategy. The People's Choice councillors have always taken the view that we oppose the sale of assets, so I'm particularly pleased to see that there's no requirement for a capital release in the next financial year. And I'm also pleased to know that there's work been done by CCHL that will inform the future view of capital release, noting in particular that capital release doesn't necessarily mean the sale of assets, and that there may well be options to release capital from the balance sheets of the companies that council owns through CCHL without actually needing to sell those companies or the shares in those companies. So, all of these things are moving in a direction that I'm increasingly comfortable with. So, I welcome this going out for consultation. I also am pleased to see that there are a number of ways that the community can engage with the consultation process this time, particularly around the involvement of the community boards and arguably more accessible opportunity to engage with the consultation process, and using technology in order to allow that to happen as well. So, there will be aspects of this draft annual plan that the communities will have strong views on, and I absolutely welcome hearing those views and being able to respond to them when we come back to finally debate this before we adopt it.
Vicky.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to see what's in front of us because it looks far more like a Christchurch City Council than I was familiar with. The borrowing doesn't look nearly as scary, and the ratios won't look nearly as scary as they did the last couple of years. I like the fact that what this does is put prioritisation on earthquake repair where they are needed, so that there is at least footpaths and roads that work in areas that have been hardest hit. I think that's really good. I also like the fact that we've put a very real emphasis on community facilities, which is great. If we look at what's actually in the annual plan, just looking at pools for example, there's a new South West pool and also a new South West library, QE2, Woolston, Metro Centre, and some salt water pools in Brighton as well. An emphasis on libraries and community facilities and things that bring the community together because we always have to remember, and one of the challenges of local government is always remembering that actually at the heart of local government is people, rather than roads and pipes. I'm delighted that the borrowing ratios are not nearly as scary as they were, they're still a bit scary in my mind, but I feel like we are gradually getting to the point where council is resuming control, and I look forward to a great deal more of that happening. In terms of the capital release, I don't see capital release as selling any of the strategic assets personally. I don't think we need to. We've listed Orion, the airport, and what's the other one? The port. Port. As our strategic assets. I knew there was another one over in Littleton. And if we look at how we could put some debt onto those and take more dividends from them, I think we can easily reach the targets that we've set ourselves, which have been reduced from seven hundred and fifty million to six hundred million over a longer period of time, without actually selling any of those key strategic assets, and I'm delighted by that. I think there's also some really important environmental initiatives in here that I really like. Obviously, the cycleways may take a year or two longer, but we get them. We get separate cycleways so that you actually feel safe cycling, safe footpaths, obviously an emphasis on walkways, and I support your head-to-head one. We've actually gone out for public consultation on the non-use of Roundup because we think that's not a sensible thing to do in terms of using it. And also, a real emphasis on the quality of our water, in terms of the Heathcote particularly, which is nowhere near what a river should look like in Christchurch, and we have put a very strong emphasis on cleaning that up, even though some people may think that that's ECAN's job. So it is important that we do all of those things. So, I like our emphasis on earthquake repairs, on community facilities, bringing the community together, not selling our key strategic assets, which is how I interpret our programme of capital release, and on environmental initiatives. So I'm really pleased to second it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul and I had the pleasure of attending a local residents' group meeting, AGM, just a few days ago. And, of course, there's a lot of information in the infrastructure strategy, the financial strategy, the draft annual plan, the long-term plan, the consultation document. But when you actually try and explain what it is that we're doing, I think the best place to start is on page ten of the consultation document. Priorities for our capital programme. Repairing and rebuilding facilities in communities most affected by the earthquakes. Reducing the flooding risk, for example, the Night Stream and Bales Creek projects. Reaffirming our commitment to the eastern suburbs so outcomes and levels of service are even across the whole city. Ensuring communities have good social infrastructure so people feel safe and involved. Key facilities are libraries, work centres and pools. Prioritising the repairs of our streets, pavements and curbing across suburban areas, particularly for the worst-affected communities and areas. Prioritising spending on water quality, including protecting our groundwater and raising the quality of our urban rivers. And prioritising suburban regeneration in the most earthquake-affected areas while balancing the suburban and central city projects. And I think that gives a really nice indication of where this council is proposing to go through its draft annual plan, and given the significant changes to our financial strategy and possibly to our infrastructure strategy, I think that's a really good starting point to try and explain in simple English what we're trying to achieve. I think we do need to reflect on what's happened and the concerns that were raised last year, which were really around if we had enough prioritisation around the community versus the central city and some of the anchor projects. And what people told us through that process was that they saw that actually linking investment to social outcomes was important, not just to economic ones, which were seen as the driver behind anchor projects. They also talked about rebuild aspiration versus community need, central government need versus community need, the economic priorities versus social recovery needs, the loss of community facilities versus commercial projects, and the need for council to better advocate to government on behalf of the community. And I think this consultation document, this proposal, really signals a change to the direction that we did last year, and that was based on the uncertainty. A lot of people were critical of the uncertainty. But I think fundamentally, we're in a much better place. There is no need to sell off assets. We've had increased growth. We've had the insurance payout, which has been a positive from a financial point of view, and also gives us the flexibility to deliver. We've got better financial performance of our council-owned companies. So the companies that we were considering selling off are actually ones that are performing, performing well, and are actually helping to reduce our burden. So that is a real plus. And also, the reality is that, as was pointed out last year, but really important, we've just had the chief executive's update for this month's council meeting, we've got a huge amount of carryforwards. So this plan is really aiming to address that significant carryforward. I do think there's some challenges ahead, and that includes the infrastructure repairs. And although we've sorted out the horizontal infrastructure review, actually, what's happened is we've gone from, initially, council's financial strategy was based on repairing and renewing the infrastructure to a better standard, resilient infrastructure, that was changed to like-for-like, and now we're in a situation where we've got less for like. So we do have a challenge around the infrastructure, and hopefully, communities who are on the, bearing the brunt of those changes, can actually engage in this process and make it clear over where the priorities are. So there's a number of things in here that actually I don't support, but I think the really important thing is that we let the community have a say, and it's much better to have things in there that the community can comment on, rather than withdrawing some of those things now. So, in some of the amendments, I'll make reference to that. I think it's really important that we do get more certainty around what streets will be renewed and when, and balanced against the expenditure in the central city. But fundamentally, I think the goal of this council should be, and the goal of this draft change, significant change to our long-term plan, is about how do we create a more modern, dynamic, sustainable, healthy and beautiful city? And when you look through the priorities, I think this document goes a long way to doing that, and I think it's to be applauded. So, I'd like to propose some amendments, but I know now's not the time to do that. But fundamentally, I think this is about making choices around our priorities as a city and as a council, and I think that page ten of the consultation document sets it out really clearly.
Thank you. Glenn.
Thank you. Thank you to all the staff who put this together and the work that the elected members have done as well, the collegiality around that. I really hope that people hone in on this document, especially and including with three point, four point one in the document, which talks about this plan differing significantly from the LTP. I think those words, in a way, come in through quite understated. It more than differs significantly, in my view, for the reasons which my colleagues have outlined already. The insurance settlement being eighty million dollars over, the ten-year capital programme reduction to one hundred and forty-six million, seven fifty down to six hundred over capital release, reduced need to buy, higher growth expected in the city's rating base than others, under-deliverability is a huge part of this. This really gives rise to me over big questions over why we ever would contemplate going down the path of asset sales. The auditor general came back and said that actually you had to have that fallback. But I think if they were in that position to cast their eyes over the whole public sector in Christchurch, they would have seen that everyone was behind in terms of the rebuild in the city. They would know that from business-as-usual times, they would know that that's amplified in an earthquake rebuild time where everyone is going frantically to build back, but actually they can't build back as fast as they'd like. That's fundamentally due to planning. I've got three things I want to quickly show you, and I will stick to my time. So the first, Dwayne Major's on the left, I can't remember the other guy's name. That's only because I know the guy on the left. Look at what this did for New Zealand in terms of public ownership. I'm not sure how you measure this. In some countries, they have a happiness o meter or something like that. New Zealand is kind of eccentric and individual enough to take on that measure in future. But look at what that did for our country in terms of retaining something in public ownership. There's a kind of dividend that's palpable. It may not be able to be measured in financial terms, or actually it could be, but look what that did for our country. I've got another one next, and this is about, this is not about the flag debate, this is about the flag now flying again at the Senatarth in New Brighton. One of our companies came to the rescue without charging the RSA. The local MP got the flag, but one of the companies came to the rescue to have that flag put up. They fixed the pole, it had been vandalised, they did some welding, they didn't charge. That's a kind of a dividend again, which could be measured in financial as well as social terms. The next here, here we go, someone doing some dredging, not dredging, it's weed eating in the river. Again, one of our companies is involved in a citywide clean-up of our two major rivers on May the seventh. The total cost will be in the region of ten thousand dollars, which we hope to find somewhere either in the current operation or grants or somewhere. Ten thousand dollars, they won't be charging, the only charge will be for the skips to pick up the rubbish. Where else are you going to get that social dividend, and I would argue, actually, financial dividend, but through ownership and retention of ownership of our assets? Two quick final points, if I've got the time left, and I don't need those slides anymore. Just over the residential red zone, you will know that I'm not promoting the fixing of the Pajers Road Bridge, there've been some furious arguments over that. I've had some conversations with staff, and if it is the case that that's due to a holdup over the residential red zone, although Skirr have actually designed that bridge, then we need to get on with consultation over the red zone. Many of the groups in the community have already begun that process, I don't see a need to duplicate it. So it's my intention to go out and have a conversation with those groups to double-check, are you ready to get going? I think our community, I suspect we're ready, but I need to double-check with them and to ensure that we get the process going. In terms of regeneration, I sense a lot of political support to actually get that legacy project up and running in New Brighton, and if we can come back with some postings, I think we can actually get it underway. Look at what signalling investment did for property values in the east of Christchurch in recent times. That was due to the council, and that was a big front pager. It'd be good if those values in terms of increase were sustained. But look at what we can achieve together if we work in partnership with the ministry and others to, you know, give this side of the city a huge boost. So those are my two main things today. The two amendments I'm putting up, I think, are deliverable, and I hope to have your support for those later on.
Okay, Paul?
I'll be brief in this point, I'll probably take five minutes, but I would first like to actually thank and congratulate the staff for all that they've done on the draft annual plan, for actually today able to make a considered and informed decision on accepting the draft annual plan that we have in front of us today. I'm actually also looking forward to hearing from our community on their views and thoughts in relation to this draft annual plan. I'm also pleased to see that our careful and considered approach in developing and setting the long-term plan direction has provided some good news for Christchurch. It's enabled lower borrowing, lower rate increases, and the delay in the capital release programme. And referred today, obviously, that that has concerned a number of members and a number of people out there in the community. So this has given us time to consider more innovative ways we can fund our future borrowing. Now, these changes are largely due to higher growth rate than was expected within our city's rating base, an eighty million dollar greater insurance payout that was budgeted for through the long-term plan. Obviously, the major contributor to this good news was the insurance settlement prior Christmas, delivering an eighty million dollar increase to what was budgeted for in our long-term plan. I'm also pleased to see we're taking a more realistic approach to our capital programme, but I'm also mindful we have a lot of work to do in this space, and if there's any ways we can speed up, that would continue to look for ways we could actually make this happen, because I think it's really important. I want to congratulate our CEO, Carleen Edwards, for the work she's done on our Great for Christchurch programme, which appears to be over-delivering. Continuing to streamline process... Continuing to streamline processes and continued prudent financial management of our operational expenditure, I'm certain we'll deliver greater savings without the loss of quality of service. However, I would like to ask that we ensure we're holding our contractors accountable and that they are delivering what we are paying for. We often get complaints about the state of our roadside gardens, weeds in the median strips, and I think these are things that can be addressed by actually putting a lot more pressure on our contracts to make sure they're delivering what they say they're going to deliver. And I think it'll go a long way, especially easing some of those complaints we get. I'm also concerned that we're pushing a lot of projects that could be delivered earlier, and I believe the council should consider maybe a floating legacy fund that would be a more prudent move, especially considering never-changing environment that we are dealing with, which consistently throws up opportunities that aren't actually done right at the moment. So that is something I'll be looking at moving a bit later. However, I'm happy to approve today's draft annual plan and looking forward to engaging with our community. Thanks.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm very, very pleased to see the document in the state that it is now and how hard everyone on it. I, from the start, though, have been very wary of suggestions and direction that puts business-as-usual work on the back burner and prioritizing with earthquake damage and repair. I'm not saying that earthquake damage and repair shouldn't be a priority, but if putting BAU work on hold, things that are key to the amenity in our city, key to the smooth running of things in our city, is because of a political fear of a backlash, if you like, in realizing more capital in our assets. And I'm certainly not in support of that. We have never, ever, ever suggested that there should be a sale of strategic assets, and I totally reject that comment from some of my colleagues this morning. It's capacity that is the issue, and I think that if we can't actually provide the resources to do the work, then there is little point in pushing for some of the work that we have done in the past. I would like to give credit to all of the staff and the elected members who have worked incredibly hard and long hours to achieve the really best outcomes for Christchurch, and I congratulate them for that. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Yeah. In principle, I support for the public consultation, for the consultation document, for the draft annual plan 2016 and 17, and some other relevant documents. However, I'm particularly concerned some of the issues. The first one, you know, South West, the leisure centre, and the new Homeby Service Centre and the library. Because as a local councillor, you know, if we review the consultation document, particularly on page 11, highlight the criteria or priorities for the capital program, repairing or rebuilding facilities in the community most affected by the earthquake. And also, in the long-term plan, the South West, the leisure centre, was scheduled to open in mid-2018, and the new Homeby Service Centre and library will be open in mid-2017. However, the draft annual plan now expect the construction will start in the second half of 2017, which means after the July of 2017. So the whole facility due to open in 2019. But regarding to budget, you know, the change, it probably will be the open in June of 2020. So my concern is the first, not compliant with the criteria for the capital program priority. Because the new Homeby Service Centre and library has been designated to replace the shutdown of the Sackman Service Centre, which was affected by the February 2011 earthquake. However, if we review the timeframe and find the amended allocation, this facility will be delayed for three years. Because the long-term plan in mid-2017, consultation document for the draft, the 2016/17, you know, annual plan will be in 2019. Timeframe for two documents is different, this is a second issue. Because consultation document will be open in 2019, however, didn't mention which month, you know, the key program changes will be open in June 2020. So we review these two documents, there's a gap, will be between the six months to 17 months. So I understand from the, you know, the, this draft, the annual plan, the staff, the business case for both the new service centre and library, as well as South West, the leisure centre, will be prepared by the April, which means next, the next month this year. So the consultation document on page 11 says construction will start in the second half of 2017. So I'm very disappointed about this timeframe. Why should this take so long? Our council should be able to deliver both this project in a more timely way. So I assure you, Mayor and the councillors, that for the next year's annual plan, I will expect both project will be planned and start in the early of 2017, which means I support its early delivery of quality community facility. Second, I'm concerned is the fee and the charges for outdoor swimming pool. Because the proposed fee and the charge for next summer, the season for outdoor, the charge will be increased from current $2 to $2.5. That's increase for 25 percentage. And the adults will be increased from current $2 to $3.5. That's increase for the 75 percentage. So this increase, not only me, you know, but I think the majority of community, the family probably can afford to pay this high increase. So I believe the success of the dollar pool coupled with the mental strain on people in the moment, that this will be a great signal to encourage more to be active, healthy, and have fun recreation our outdoor facility. And also, as you are aware, after the earthquake, lots of residents, most of them are families, moved to the South West area from the east and the some other area. We currently only have the outdoor pool, so we have no the leisure and a credit centre. So this utility is so, you know, quite high for the community, for the parents, families, etc. Three, the third item is regarding to the capital release. I'm pleased that in the, sorry, in the long-term plan, the capital release has been reduced by $150 million from the original $750 million to $600 million. However, in terms of council, financial position has changed significantly. And also, especially council has settled its earthquake insurance claim and received $635 million. So I insist on that I not support asset sales. First, I'm happy that this annual plan to keep and reduce the rates, the increase to a five percentage for another three years, I'm quite happy there. So overall, I support the earliest possible delivery of the complex of the South West facility and some other area, the community facility. Second, I'm particularly concerned the outdoor fee increased too high. Third one, I insist on not supporting the asset sales, and I'm happy the rates reduced five percentage this year and for the next two years. So we wait and see the public community feedback, and then we might have further review and make the final version of decision. Thank you.
Pauline, and then Tim.
Thank you, Leanne. Look, most of it's been said, I think, by now, and so I'll try and help Jimmy out by only taking 30 seconds. I'd once again like to congratulate the consultation document because it's in plain English. It's really good for people to read that and understand the situation at council here and where their money's going, where it comes from, what it's prioritized for. But it also contains enough financial detail for people to really get into it if they want to. So I really hope this will encourage the Christchurch residents to make a submission and to feel confident that the time they invest in coming in here and talking to us will be recognized. As it was last year, it was a good process last year, and we all really enjoy people coming in, and I think we proved last year that we really did listen. So I'm pleased to see community facilities are highlighted, along with water quality, and they're both close to my heart. So you can see spirits are lifting as we see the progress with our new city emerging and new homes being built. And this will, of course, increase our rating base, which will continue to improve our books over time. And of course, we need to prioritize the earthquake repairs so that we can actually get past it all, start to see some improvements in our local communities and our footpaths and streets, that sort of stuff that's really day-to-day affects people. Get past that so we can continue to move on. So thanks again, everyone, for all the input on this. And just to reiterate Counselor Livingston's words, the collegial way in which we have all worked through to this point, and I think that's really important to stress that this has been a real...
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. I should get braver and go first because everything's really been said, but I just want to say, two and a half years ago, pretty much a new council was elected, and we walked in the door, and shortly after that, a statutory manager was brought in for building consents to take control of that, which is a cornerstone of any council. So we have gone a long, long way. And I think, Leanne pointed out, that last, end of last year, there was a hump, and it seemed we got over it. And I think with the insurance payouts, and I could go on about the better dividends being paid, and hopefully, that trend will keep going. So not only have this city been through a huge change, but our staff has as well. We've got a new CEO, and they've had a number of structural changes, and I just want to thank them for the work that they have done on this document along with us, because we are the councillors, councillors and our staff work together, and there's been a huge amount of work done on this document. And I'm really proud to be able to support this. I think, as was said before, I really am looking forward to the engagement with our public on this document, that, as you pointed out, Pauline, I really like the consultation document. It is clear, it is simple, but it also outlines the implications of the changes that we are proposing, and I think that's really important. So thank you all very much for a great job done.
Phil, and then Jamie.
Look, I think a key point in the success of this is the work that's been done, as has been said by staff, but it's particularly around the capital program, and in fact, how much that can be reduced in terms of what we, as a council, can actually deliver. So I think we're all really pleased to see that as a key part of the equation. I want to comment on some parts of the consultation document. I think it's a really good document. The section on cycleways, just to be clear, I think we actually knew that, in fact, to deliver these would take seven years. So to most people, that won't be a surprise. The consultation processes, the whole process of having to acquire land and often building new curbs and channels, all that takes time. And so, and the key thing, as Vicky Buck referred to, is that the cycleways need to be safe, and that's what we will deliver. The other area I wanted to comment on in the document is around the Northern Arterio and Cranford Street. There's no question that, in fact, yes, there's more money had to go in the budget. Part of that was due to the downstream effects, which now have been included and which we, as a council, were already clear on. So although, and I think it was good that the community board and the local residence association brought those concerns to our attention. But we're going to get better transport as a result. And the other thing, and I'll refer to it later, is around the amendment for the car parking fees on Hagley Park. I'll certainly be discussing it later, too.
Jamie?
Thanks. Look, where will you be on the 24th of March 2026? It's pretty hard, you know. No one really, truly knows what you're going to be doing in 10 years' time. And we're put in an awkward position, I suppose, where we have to do a long-term plan. It's a legal document, and it's a 10-year plan. That's what we need to say, where we'll be as a community in 10 years' time. Now, we have a bit of information there to make an educated guess, but it's all it really is, and it's trying to take the aspirations and the dreams and the hopes of the community, couple that with the financial realities, and try and put a flight path together. The reality of the annual plan is it's the deviations, it's the amendments to that long-term plan. Because as things get closer, you have better information, priorities change, circumstances change, facts become clearer. So I think that finding that balance with the information that you have is never an easy, an easy task, but it's been said how well I think we've worked together as an elected, elected body of colleagues, with our staff and with our community, try and put our best foot forward. We've made some pretty shrewd decisions, tried to make some hard calls around the need-to-haves versus the nice-to-haves. No one takes pleasure in doing that because, you know, everything's important. We want everything now, and ideally, it doesn't cost anything. But that's just not the reality. So I think, I think what we've got in front of us, the draft annual plan, is something that's pretty upfront. I think we've been pretty upfront with our community around the capital release program. I think we've been pretty upfront with our community around the capital program. And finally, the only point I want to make is that I think we now need the community to be pretty upfront with us, tell us if we've got it right. We don't get everything right. We try to. But we're pretty useless if we don't have the help from our community, and ultimately, we're there to be a conduit for them to help our community get the Christchurch that they deserve, the Christchurch for Christchurch, by Christchurch. And that's why it's called a draft annual plan. So we're going in there with good faith. There's been a lot of hard work, but there's still a lot to go, and it has been said, but it's important to note, that the work from our staff around this has been incredible. It's not taken for granted, it's appreciated, and I've really enjoyed working with my colleagues around this. So I look forward to going through the process and hearing back from the community because that's the exciting part.
David?
In 10 years' time, I doubt whether I'll probably be still around the table, but I'm certainly very supportive of adopting this annual plan and moving the city forward, and I probably adopt the attitude that what I'm contributing to is probably going to be for the benefit of my grandchildren rather than myself. So, look, I really do endorse a lot of the sentiments that have been expressed already today, and particularly the cooperative manner in which this plan has evolved. I particularly give support to probably the four cornerstones of our annual plan changes this year, the reduction to the capital program, lower borrowing, delaying and further capital release, and a lower increase in rates. So, look, I'm very pleased that we're putting this plan out for consultation now, and I would like to see some good public direction, particularly on items like prioritizing of road repairs, levels of service. I said earlier that today, I think we probably need to adopt a different attitude in some of our levels of service, recognizing different treatment that's needed in different parts of the city, and that's something that I certainly would endorse. I'm interested particularly in public comment on the glyphosate issue. That's going to cost this city $20 million plus over the next 10 years. And finally, just with the capital review program, there has been a lot of doing and faring with the Eastern Sport facility, and I do note that in their draft, there's still a couple errors. Page 27 still refers to Eastern Sport starting, and there's a diagram there in 2017, and on page 39, there's a reference to UPE exchanges with regard to the capital review program relating to the aquatic facility. So there's still a little bit of tidy up to do there yet. So generally, I'd just like to reiterate my support for the plan, and thanks to those that have, amongst my colleagues and staff, for the manner in which we've put this together this year. Thank you.
I don't have much to add. I think we've achieved a lot in the last year. The insurance settlement, obviously, being a big piece of work which was completed, the capital program review, the operational savings, and I think just, you know, we've created a sound and stable financial platform for the next five years, which is all about regeneration, and I think that's really where our focus needs to be. And I think this is a good draft annual plan, and I'm looking forward to hearing back from the community on, as Dave said, where their priorities are, where they'd like us to focus, the trade-offs between lower rates and spending now and levels of service. So I think it's a good conversation, and feels a little bit like we're drawing a line under the last five years, and we can start to look forward with more optimism.
Thanks very much, and thank you very much for the quality of the debate, because it just really does reflect, I think, quite a significant, well, I was going to say change, but then it makes it sound like it's a negative, but it's well, I was going to say change, but then it makes it sound like it's a negative, but it's not, it's a positive. It's um, and a sense of maturity around the extent of the issues that we have to confront as a city. And I think that's great. Um, and I think Jamie was quite right. The only reason that we've got an amendment, uh, the only reason we've got a consultation document this time is because we're amending the LTP. And the only reason that we're amending the LTP is because there are significant changes to the capital program. This has a flow-on effect, both positive and negative. And that's something that we want to talk to our communities about. Yanni took exactly the words out of my mouth because I'd written down what I wanted to say, which was to quote page 10, priorities for our capital program. These are the, these are the basis for the priorities that we've set. Now we want to hear from the community, have we got those priorities right? You know, we've said repairing or rebuilding facilities in the communities most affected by the earthquakes. We've talked about reducing flood risk, we've talked about reaffirming our commitment to the eastern suburbs so that we can get those levels of service even across the city. Ensuring that communities have good social infrastructure, prioritising the repair of our streets, pavements and curb. Because it was news to me that skirt didn't cover pavements. And that really was a bit of an eye-opener to me because it did explain to me why we had streets that just didn't have even one footpath that people could use, um, you know, when they were trying to traverse their way down to the local supermarket or shops. And um, and so I think that, you know, in terms of the footpaths, um, getting, you know, seeing a perfectly, well, looking good to me, footpath being dug up on my way to the airport and then knowing the extent of the damage still in the eastern suburbs and out at Sumner and places like that, you sort of think to yourself, no, actually, we've got to get those priorities right. And I really take on board what Ellie said about the need to, um, to ensure that routine maintenance doesn't get so far behind that it doesn't provide for the amenity of the whole city. So, and that's a genuine concern. And that's what we're asking our community to feed back on in terms of the priorities. My view around maintenance, routine maintenance or renewals as they're called, is that they can't be in a BAU framework, a business-as-usual framework. They need to stack up, they've got to stack up against the other damage that we're repairing within our city. Um, and then of course, the other areas of the prioritising spending on water quality and suburban regeneration, that's very much a passion, I think, for everyone around the table was wanting to see that focus. The other area of the consultation document that I'd like to draw people's attention to are the coming years' issues and challenges on page 13. And basically what this says is that as a council, we want to find new ways of doing things. We want to explore different options for combining facilities or using standardised designs, opening our capital program to innovative delivery options. For example, you know, sort of sending more work to the external markets, skirt and development Christchurch. What are the different ways that we could deliver that could actually speed up the process? Um, improving consultation, making greater use of early contractor involvement and using more design and build contracts and alliance models. And I think where and when it is possible to go faster, that's what we want to do. But when we open it up to questions to our community, do you have suggestions about how we could deliver our capital program in a more timely and efficient manner? I don't want anyone to think that that's just directed at the residents. That's also directed at the contract and community, the development communities, and saying to them, come, we're open, our door is open to new ways of delivery, new ways of thinking about how these projects could be better delivered. Because if we can, if we can find the right trade-offs, then they are the trade-offs that certainly I think everyone around this table would be certainly interested in hearing about. I know that some councillors have gone back to raise the question of the anchor projects. But I have to say that we were signed up to them when we arrived here, that deal was already struck. Um, and how we get the best out of them for the benefit of the city as a whole. And actually, when you look at some of the ambitions around those anchor projects for the region as well, because they will have a significant impact on our economy. And that has a flow-on effect to other parts. I mean, I've made comments about the importance of the convention centre, which is outside our sphere of influence. But that precinct in its own right will catalyse the announcements around other hotel developments. It will enable us to win conventions and conferences that have been lost to us over the last wee while. So it is an important project and it might look like it has no social outcome. But I guess that the benefit to the region as a whole is one of those that we would take into account. I don't think, I think it's important that we, that we don't misrepresent our ability to change things we can't change. We actually have to accept what is, I've had to suck up the odd bit myself, and accept what we can change and what we can't change. In terms of capital release, we never, um, we never referred to asset sales as the only mechanism by which capital could be released to the council from CCHL. Um, but all we can rely on from an auditor's point of view is the value of the shares, the value of those assets. Um, and I'm absolutely, I was always confident that we would get to the position that we've got to now. Um, but I'm worried that there's still a fundamental misunderstanding of what would have happened if we hadn't signed off an LTP last year. Because without reference to the value of those assets in our LTP, we wouldn't have got the sign-off from audit. And I don't know whether people fully appreciate the seriousness of that situation had we had to confront it. So I'm glad that it's been raised because it's, I think, given an opportunity to explain again that it is only the value in the assets that we can rely on. It's like we couldn't rely on an exact amount for the insurance recoveries because we didn't know what the insurance recoveries could be. We could only rely on what the audit office accepted was a reliable piece of information, which was an assessment. And fortunately for us, it was well under what we actually received by way of our insurance recoveries. So, and I wanted to close on the same point that Raf made, was that we're shifting to a new phase as a city, a brand-new phase, we're going from recovery to regeneration. And to me, regeneration means two things, it means restoration and it means new growth. So it encompasses both of those concepts. And what an exciting future that puts in front of us for the next five years. It is a step change for the city and we need to make it there. So this annual plan gives us the basis for doing just that. And I'm certainly looking forward to the feedback from the community so that we can proceed from here. And I'm now going to find out how we proceed from here. Right. So um, so we're going to take a break now. So um, yeah, so morning tea will be here in about five minutes. Um, and we've got some hard copies of the amendments and notes available to everyone. So if you can all have a look at those. And maybe, um, maybe, do we want to take it till half past 10? Yeah, so we'll return it, we'll adjourn till half past 10. Thank you.
Anyway, so what we're going to do is we're going to start with the amendments. So if we're just, we're just going to move them in block and given the first one of them, I suspect that Andrew Turner would like to move these amendments.
Yeah, I'd be very happy to do it.
This is just headway, head to head walkway, headway, making headway, head to head walkway, Manuka Cottage.
Can we bring the screen where we can see what you're looking at as well?
Yeah, just, oh, sorry, I didn't realise you went. And the funeral block, blocked burials for full size plot, the car park fee paid to the city council for cost recovery for damage to turf and childcare facilities at Pioneer Early Learning Centre, which is neither here nor there, we no longer own the facility. So it's not, it's really could have been dealt with as an error. I've talked to the chief executive that in terms of the schedule of fees and charges, I think one of the lessons learned is that councillors in their governance role need to see the schedule of fees and charges earlier in the process. We didn't see them until they were just about due to go online. So I did note that there was a comment in the paper this morning about the funeral plot burials for full size plots in terms of the level of increase that it represented. But we're not going to go out and consult on that. We want to actually review it for a further 12 months so that we can really investigate and get to the bottom of it. So if Andrew would like to move those.
Yeah, I will, just on that head to head walkway.
Tim would like to second it.
Yep, I'm so happy to do that. Just on that head to head walkway, I'm wondering whether we could just clarify that one little bit more and just add the words something like programme delivery or project delivery. So if programme delivery is technically possible or if project delivery is technically possible.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because it's not about the technical possibility of moving funding, it's about the technical possibility of delivering project.
No, 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 oh, sorry, yeah, it's the project delivery because it's all about geotechnical work in the, in the area.
Yeah, no, very happy with that. I mean, that reflects the reality that we've been talking about in the earlier debates. I think it's truly reflective of where we're at.
All right, so the other two, the other, that's been moved and seconded, so I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye.
Would you like some advice on it first, ma'am? Because the reason we took the break was so we could feed back what the implications might be.
Sorry, I thought these ones were all advised by staff as.
So you've been advised by staff around how some of that could move and we've gone and looked at the financial implications to make sure they're okay.
All right, I apologise.
No, no, it's, it's a very complicated process and there's no issues with either of these and the head to head can be covered off by carry forward and will flow through on the head to head walkway. There is a slight increase in year two, but within the realms of rounding and the Manuka Cottage is also carry floored with an additional 120, which only has a marginal impact. All of that, I think, is absolutely two thumbs up.
All right, no, there's no, there's, there's, there's no, what.
Well, it's just a question because we've had the advice back, but we've had no chance to ask the question based on the advice. So just a really straightforward question on the Hagley Park car fee.
Yeah.
Which the staff have come back and said $2 and I just wanted to know why we wouldn't look at a higher level like $3, so just.
So let's see, there's a $2 to council and the car parking fee that the operator can charge is a maximum of five.
Yeah.
And it's set at that level so that actually the event organiser can actually pay their staff, pay the traffic people that are looking after the car parks. So it's a $5 maximum, three goes to the operator of the car park and two comes to council. And that is the only viable way of running it, otherwise the event organiser wouldn't be able to actually operate. Our desire is to actually run appropriate car parks rather than having a car park under trees and damaged routes, but over time we're trying to restrict the amount of car parking on Hagley Park anyway. So the $2 is a viable charge coming back to council with a maximum of five.
All right. Phil?
Look, I think that's what I hope would be intended, that in fact that $2 instead of $1.2 would come back to council to cover those costs that have been referred to. And there is also some work being done on how in fact we need to reduce car parking on Hagley Park altogether. So to me, this, that fits alongside this.
I just wanted to know why it wasn't higher.
Yeah, no, no. Okay, so I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, that's carried. Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to the, to the notes below. So, and we'll, we'll go through them one by one and if people have questions of staff in relation to each one of them. So the first one is the Wollston Limwood Pool, 48K is allocated for the project for site investigation in 2016-17. Internal planning investigation works will be funded additionally by OpEx. So presumably, Yanni, you've got a question on that?
Oh, I had a separate amendment as well related to Limwood Wollston Pool, so I don't know whether you want to do it as part of that or you want to do it independently.
No, they, they, these are notes about what, what, what is, what is doable. So, sorry, I haven't been sent in any amendments.
Just before we get on to the amendments, Leon, have we got a coverall that if something can be done earlier?
Yes, yes, I mean, there's an assumption that if anything can be brought forward, it will be, you know, with the projects ready to go, it will be brought forward. And I don't know whether we want to have a specific set of words that actually say that.
I think it might cover off the issue.
As an overarching provision that.
And self worth.
Any, any project that is on the, on the LTP or on the LTP will be brought forward if it is, if it is possible, I mean, if the project is ready to proceed, when the project is ready to proceed.
So part of the amendment that I put through was also to acknowledge that the Hagley Ferment Community Board has identified a preliminary site for investigation, which is not what is set in the consultation document. So it's, it's not a major change to the consultation document, but it actually just makes reference to that progress. But I still want to move the amendment that we actually put some budget on for this upcoming financial year and for next year.
You went forward, yes, thanks. Okay, but so.
So we've had visibility of that amendment from councillor Johansson. It was $5 million for next year and $15 million for the year after. And what that would do to rates is 5.02, then 5.24, then 5.22 and 5.44. So it would be an increase to rates because of those, those capital costs. More importantly, I think it is really around delivery, you know, we're not having the funding envelope being the constraint here or the rate. It's really around the ability to deliver the capital program in a space where we believe the full 50 is already, you know, really tight and full capacity. And Rob, I believe you were checking on the ability to get this up and earlier and obviously we've had the conversation and if things can be done earlier, they will be. But Rob, if you could talk to where we currently think that's possible.
Yeah, so the program as it stands has a construction commencing in, towards the end of 2018 calendar year and then progressing through, predominantly through 2019. It's a new facility, limited planning community engagement today, so that project timeframes reflect that situation. It's great to hear that site may be potentially identified, but that needs to be worked through in the business case together to, to get the, the project up and running.
So I wouldn't recommend putting it on the plan at this point because of the rates, because of the deliverability and because of the need to then flow it through all the underlying documentation.
Yeah. Paul?
Is there enough money on budget to do the work to enable the site selection, the community engagement and all the work that goes through to actually make this possible? So by the time the money is on budget, we can stick the spade in the ground.
Ah, yes, I believe there is and some of it will be picked up through OpEx as well.
So we will actually start engaging with our community on this project as of the new coming year?
Yeah, and there's work going on now in preparation for the project.
Because I think that's really the, the issue here is we know it takes a couple or three years to get the spade in the ground anyway through the work, but I want to make sure that we're actually engaging so the community knows that this project is actually started.
Yeah, and I think because there's not large construction going to happen in the new year, if there was a requirement to bring forward, I mean, we'd be talking probably in the order of tens of thousands if need be, it won't be huge amounts, then that, I think we've covered it off by the, the conversation earlier.
We haven't had a paper come to council yet on the specific project. So that's, that's the first step. So the council needs to receive a, a, a paper and I know that the Hagley Ferment Community Board did make a particular recommendation in relation to its preference around site selection, but we have to agree a site selection process. And I know that in, in the eastern suburbs, there was a, a very particular process which actually involved a wider group of people. The community board worked in collaboration with a wider group of people, but given the, the circumstances, they were quite different, it may not be appropriate. So I think that we need to kind of get people to put a riggle on really in terms of getting that paper to council because it commences the process of developing the, the case for site selection and the process beyond that. So I've got Phil and then Becky.
Look, just from what staff have said and all along with that, I guess we do need more information and so I think, say, an amendment or a, a, yeah, especially around site selection, but it's really a, a process for investigation of what is needed. So I think an amendment that way would in fact ensure that the report would come back to council.
I think the note up there covers exactly that.
Yeah.
I think you've also got to recognise that we are delivering the eastern pool, we are doing the Hornby Pool, we're doing the Metro Sports Pool. So we've got a certain amount of resource that we need to actually make sure that we get the right solutions for all of those because they are big projects and so this will then fit in. But we are able to start on that site selection. We're in the middle of talking to the M O E about various options up there. It's not going to be, I don't think a solution is going to just drop out immediately, it's, but we have got exactly, so we can progress through that. And if we can clear all those, we can then potentially bring it forward as Rob said.
I can also add the project is getting extra scrutiny from ELT in that it's, it's on the watch list, which is getting monthly scrutiny to ensure staff, you know, keep on top of.
Wouldn't want to be on that. Okay. I, I love this project, I think it's particularly exciting. So I'm delighted with the suggestion that if it can be brought forward, it will be brought forward. So the challenge for the community board now is to go and do a whole pile of work and get that cracking. Yep.
Paul?
I just want to reiterate the importance of making sure that the community.
I just want to reiterate the importance of making sure that the community knows this is a certainty. And just the, that comment that councillor Laverde ran, what's needed, we know what's needed. It is a pool. And it's a complex that actually the community can enjoy. And I think that's some of the terminology they would get quite concerned about what is needed. We know what's needed. We need to do the work, admittedly, and we were happy to do that work. We just want to make sure that there's enough money on the budget that we can do that work. So when the stuff's, when the thing's ready to go, we stick the spade in the ground.
Yanni?
Yeah, um, thanks. I think it's really important to acknowledge that this has been around for 20 years and the, the need for it. And also that the community have felt that, you know, throughout numerous processes in the past, like with the Wollston Pool being demolished, and last week we had the Wollston Gala, and the people were actually really good, you know, allowed the Wollston Pool to be demolished in good faith, that there would be a commitment to actually putting something back. And they've been waiting at least a decade, if not longer, around, around that. So, you know, I think it's great that we agree that the need is to get it done. But I am concerned about the signal that the current financial plan sends. And if it's an issue of just putting more money into year two, rather than having as much in year one, then I'm happy to amend it so that that's the case. But I personally can't understand why it would take three years or four years, as is proposed, to get this complete. And the idea was, as we previously discussed, that actually the synergy around the other pool projects, it was much better possibly to look at cost efficiencies of actually doing some of them maybe together. So I'm really adamant that we need to keep more than just $48,000 on budget for this upcoming financial year. Because actually, we need to send a strong signal that this is happening. So if it's just to put $3 million on and have the $17 million the next year. But yeah, I, I just think the signal we send by taking the money off budget and putting it out three years sends a really bad signal to the community that has actually been confronted. And remember the schools that came in last year to the LTP and were critical of it being done in 18, 19 even. So this community is facing huge amounts of challenges with the mental health, with the social deprivation, with the huge changes that are going on. They've just had the East Gate Mall expand with a non notified consent. They've had residential intensification signaled. They've had a quarter of the park or a third of the park taken up with a temporary village. And they've seen no positive investment by the council into facilities to deal with the increases that have, that have been happening. So I, I personally just think it's really important that there is some money, significant money on budget for the next financial year. I mean, if you just think of the cost of consultants on a number of these other projects, $48,000 doesn't go anywhere near the level of money that's needed to actually get work done, let alone the remediation of any possible site.
I think staff advice is, is pretty clear. Putting the money on budget does not deliver the project. And we don't believe we can deliver it faster. Or we, if we can, we will. So putting money on budget that we have to wait for, for something we can't deliver, I don't think is a good outcome for the community.
The, the trouble was is that we, we had a process by which, I mean, I haven't, I hadn't seen this amendment. It wasn't sent to me. So the, the process was that if we could, you know, bring things forward, we, we absolutely would make that as an overarching commitment. But we agreed right from the get-go that we weren't going to put things on budget. We couldn't actually deliver. That was the whole philosophy that stood behind the review of the capital program. And it, it necessarily means that we've got to look at where projects are in fact up to. And I know that Wollston and Limwood have been after a pool. Before the earthquakes, I signed a petition for them to get a pool. I mean, there's been a real dearth of facilities in that area. So it does need to be resolved. But it doesn't fix it to put the money on budget. But what I'm hearing from staff is that they'll have to go back to the audit office and get a whole new audit as a result of this change. So is that right?
Yes, yes, I believe so.
Is $48,000 enough to do the work we need to do? I don't, I think I agree with Yanni. I don't think $48,000, we spent $60,000 consulting, a limited consultation on the Southern Escape Park. So I think $48,000 is not going to go very far. So that's the question I've got. Have we got enough on budget?
They have said that there will be additional funding available through OpEx. So they've said the money's there to do the consultation and the project site investigation. The money's there. Presumably, the site investigation is to make sure it's not bad land. It doesn't have to be decontaminated or something, you know, it's a site investigation.
We've got money on budget to decontaminate the land. It's an old nursery site. So.
But that's not the site, Yanni. That's not fair. The community needs to be engaged in a whole conversation about whether that is the appropriate site. So, I mean, it's not, I think you're jumping ahead of where you've got to. I mean, I, I think it's a shame that you want to move this amendment in light of our agreed position, that we wouldn't put things on budget, that we couldn't guarantee, well, not guarantee, but that we weren't going to be able to necessarily deliver because of where the project was up to. I mean, carry forwards are just as devastating to people because there's an expectation raised that things are going to be delivered and then they're, they're smashed down again.
Well, I think we can deliver this project within two years. I can't see any good reason why we can't. And so reducing the funding from two years, putting it out to four years, to me, doesn't make any sense. And, you know, if you take other projects, we have, we don't have papers coming to council. We're spending.
I guess I'm going to have to put it as an amendment.
Yeah.
And if it stands, it stands.
Yep.
That means that we put at risk the timeframe for our, our LTP consultation. Can I just suggest?
We've got an overarching thing that if we can do things faster, particularly community facilities, we will.
Yep.
We all want to make the Limwood-Wollston Pool happen because we understand the deprivation index and what it is around Limwood. And having worked in the Limwood schools, I understand it totally. So we want this to happen. There will be ways in which you can bring it forward that don't involve staff time. And they'll probably involve a design build solution once you've consulted the public on where the site goes. So I think we can achieve the outcomes that your community board wants and that the council wants within the context of the current budget, because we know that we've got room for maneuver within the capital budget anyway. So as soon as the community board have found a site, consulted the public, and then come back with a shorter term solution, then I think we start talking about where, where.
Well said, Vicky. And can I just add to that, that we've got at least one project in our ward that is similarly keen to move forward. But after discussing it with staff, and of course, what you've just said is entirely 100% true and correct. So I, it's just a shame that this is holding things up.
This is, this, this, this can all be resolved before June, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If this project is capable of advancing within the timeframe, we can move it forward.
Reach into the computers.
But it's doing it at the end of the line, which is why I was trying to say that this is the beginning of the process of the public engagement. I mean, are we going to seriously put it on budget and then have no one from Limwood-Wollston come along and make representations to their community board and then take it off because it can't be delivered? Or would it be better that we actually front-ended the desire to get the information together so that we could actually make a decision by the 30th of June about what is in fact going on budget? Because we know then what's deliverable in that timeframe. Andrew?
Thank you. I mean, I totally understand where the, the two councillors for the ward are coming from. And I totally get the, the interest of the community in this and the interest of the community board in this and the desire to get this underway. I mean, what we're actually talking about is delivering the pool as quickly as possible. And really, a lot of this conversation is about showing a commitment to the community that we are delivering the pool as quickly as possible as well. And where the funds appear on budget is one way we can show that commitment, but there are other ways of doing it as well. So I mean, in terms of bringing a paper to council around starting the consultation process with the community and working out a process which is, is, is fast-tracking this as quickly as possible, how quickly can we get that paperworked up and brought to council?
That, that paperwork will come through basically the Parks and Reserves Group in conjunction with mine. So I would have to go and have a talk to John and Darren and just see where that stream of work is. What we've given and undertaken to staff is we've said, do not stop work on any of these projects. Continue them as fast as we can because we've also said that it is possible to bring money forward if these advance, if the resource concerns, if the land consultation goes a lot smoother than possible. But in the past, what we've found is those processes have been longer than what they have. And so what we've tried to do is put a realistically deliverable project. So we are going to do things as quickly as possible. I can't, John's not here, he's, and Nora's Darren. So I can't actually definitely let you know what that timetable is. But they are working on that as quickly as they possibly can.
Well, how about this additional wording, request staff, this is right at the front, request staff to provide advice prior to the final adoption of the annual plan in June on the deliverability of, early deliverability of projects. So that this can be taken into account in this year's annual plan. Oh, okay. Request staff to provide advice prior to the final adoption of the annual plan in June on the early deliverability of projects, including the Wollston-Limwood Pool. So that's making it explicit around that one. Yep. But I mean, that's, that's, that's a noting provision. So do you still want to put your amendment?
No, that's fine. I mean, if, if we get that put in. But I think the signal needs to be really clear that we are committed to actually doing it. And that if we can get the advice back, because the message that's gone out, even with the proposed draft consultation document, is that we're deferring.
The consultation document hasn't gone out yet, Yanni?
No, the proposed one, which has become public. So we've already had the negative feedback from the community board over the feeling of, you know, it being pushed out. I think that the message that needs to be sent is that we're committed to doing it as soon as possible. We've got a process underway. I think what, one thing to note is there's a number of other projects that don't get reports that come to council that just kind of happen because money's on budget. And maybe what we need is actually a bit of process around how these projects actually get initiated and work continues. Because at the moment.
I see your frustration.
Because there's no money on budget, work hasn't happened on it.
It's not just, it's not just projects.
Yeah.
But we, we make decisions during the LTP process. And then what happens? The biodiversity partnership. I mean, I've, I've lost sight of it. I don't know what's happened to it.
Ritalin trunk main.
There, there are all sorts of things that come up during the LTP process that I don't feel like we've got a checklist approach to how they then get progressed. So, and this is probably one of those as well. Because it was added to the LTP, you know, by way of amendment without a staff report to support it. So, you know, when we, when we undertake these processes, we just have to accept that there's a bit of a consequence, which is how do we then drive the work program to ensure that it's delivered? And that's, that's kind of learning as we go, I'm afraid.
So I think there needs to be consistency around projects. So Victoria Street, which has got funding on budget.
I, I agree that. But I mean, let's, let's not move on to another subject.
Don't lock another project.
Let's, let's go back to the, let's go back to the list. So what's the next one on the list? The next one is the Governor's Bay Jetty, which is no change to the annual plan. However, the council's contribution can be brought forward to align with the community fundraising as the project progresses. And that's been communicated.
Yeah, it has. And I've had some communication with staff around this. My understanding is the letter has been sent to the Jetty Trust. An indication has been given to me that the Jetty Trust are comfortable with the content of that letter. I mean, again, this is really just about sending a signal that council is committed to this project. We appreciate that there might be some, some timing issues around it, or there may not. The important message is that we retain the flexibility to bring funding forward to match the community contribution as soon as that community contribution is ready to be matched. So on that basis, I'm happy with that. The, the Jetty Trust are fully capable and, and fully, yeah, involved in this project. And I'm sure if they've got any further comment, they'll be making a submission and coming to us as part of that submissions process.
Thank you.
So on the basis of the advice I've received, I'm comfortable with this.
Right. The, the New Brighton Legacy Project is, is there because that's called learning the lesson of last year, when if you're not explicit in the capital program, you better tell people that the funding's actually in place in a, in a, in a pool and awaiting a business case.
Yes.
So the money is on budget. Let me be crystal clear. The money is on budget.
This is the time to strike. So they are going to work on it.
Yes.
Come back, budget.
Ashmole Street, again, this, this work sits at a program level. And there are going to have to be further investigations take place to ensure the issues raised are addressed. Do you, do you want to speak to that, Rob?
Um, I think, yeah, it's, that's correct, that it sits at a, at a program level. It's hard to pull out. I think councillor Hanson had a conversation, Dave or, or Chris Gregory. And there was a concern around where it sits as an order of priority. So I think, but we, we just need to document the fact that it will be picked up as a matter of priority within a program that's within the annual plan for next year.
So I've moved an amendment as well on that. So the problem is that the response that has come back, so we don't have a list of street renewals, but the response has come back that the street renewal budget is at capacity and it's fully allocated. But we don't know what streets have been allocated within that. And we've got a street that's got four different types of carbon channel, that's flooding, that's got mosquitoes breeding in it. And it's in a pretty bad state. And it's just had its skirt repaired. So I don't know what process we have as councillors to actually get streets added to the renewal program where we see a community need. And I'm still a little bit unclear. So I, I personally want an explicit resolution that this one does get added to that program level budget, even though we don't know what other streets are in it. I was happy to offer substitutions, but I can't do that because I don't know what's in this one. So, but it's not a huge cost. And it would actually, you know, I think should be a priority. So.
Well, I mean, the, the challenge for me in terms of being able to support an amendment of this nature is that, that I've got nothing to base it on, you know. So, I mean, again, this is one that's easily able to be picked up and worked on over the next six months. I mean, we've had months on the capital program. And I think it is really important that if we're talking, because it's not just nothing. It's 700,000, isn't it? So given that that's a substantial sum of money, it's not, it's not something that you can just put on by itself. Because as you say, something else has to come off. And no, that isn't your function to do that. We've got a priority process. And it is something that we need to have visibility of. But we can do that over the next six months, isn't it? Four months. Where are we? March, April, May, June, three months. And we can get it done by then. But I can't see that I could support putting a street ahead of other streets and pushing a street down when I don't even know what the facts are.
I'm, I'm with you. I mean, we, we've got Grain Street in our ward, which was the next street off the block just before the earthquake. They had waited 15 years for that to be done up. They had gone on and on. Now, if we're going to go street by street, I'm sure every councillor at this table could put up 15 to 20, 25 streets.
But not in this process.
Not in this process. This is a draft. This is a draft plan that's going out for consultation.
You want us to have no input into the specifics of the draft plan. It's crazy.
Plan that's going out. You know, I mean, the, the, the truth is, is that we've got, you know, I mean, it is a, we've, we've gone through an entire review of our capital program. I mean, it's, it's never going to be perfect. It's never going to be ideal. But what we've done is the best that we can under the circumstances. And I think that we, we really do have to trust staff to come back to us with details between now and June. This can form part of the annual plan. Nothing's going to change between now and the 30th of June in terms of the work that's going to be done in this area. So, so why not just wait until we've got the final plan to sign off?
With respect, Mayor, I think we're going around in circles. We all understand that, or most of us do. Could we move on? Because I think.
The council is to move amendments to the draft plan.
So you want, I'm not, I'm not denying your right to do it. So you would like to move that amendment?
Glenn.
And who's seconding it? Paul. So I'll put that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
That's lost.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. So, but we will continue to reference Ashmole Street in the context of the noting provisions.
And can we get a list of the street renewals that are programmed? So we actually know, which has been requested for the last three months?
Yeah, well, look, Yanni, we, we, we will, we will deal with that in the timeframe that we've got ahead of us. So we will. So can we go back to the list? Right. St Albans Park Pavilion in Part Repair, Construction Works, Current. St Albans Park Pavilion and Park Repair, construction works currently for financial year 2019, but maybe brought, brought forward, it's not brought forward, to FY 2018. That's due to the fact that it's a rebuild as opposed to a repair.
There's actually the turf renewal and the pavilion and toilet block rebuild, so there's, it's one big project.
But there's drainage on the park too.
Yes, exactly. So, what we're thinking is if we could move the 50,000-
Forty, forty, oh, beg your pardon, 50.
Yeah, in 2017 to 2016, 17, we could get some investigative and design works done and I'd like to, I've mentioned to staff, maybe we could prioritise just the toilet block in the first instance and that could be considered, but there's work to do, but it's such a highly used park, it's incredible and it really does need a toilet facility.
And I think it's been signalled as well, if I can just jump in for quite some time, that this was going to be done, and I have to say it was a bit of a surprise, Paulina and myself, that it had been pushed out as far as it has. But being cognisant of the comments that have been made so far, what we would like to do and propose is the amendment wording that the $50,000 currently scheduled for item 2.1, which is the park turf renewal, be moved forward to the 2016-17 year, staff have got this wording, to enable community consultation and resulting design work to get underway immediately. So, there are practical reasons for that, but also, as other colleagues have said, it's a very strong signal to the community that we need this to get underway. Would also like to additionally suggest that the 400k currently in the 2018-19 year be moved forward to the 2017-2018 year. Now, if that is going to cause some issues as far as reworking it goes, then we are prepared to, based on what we've heard as well, to look at that within the annual plan review, you know, next year, but it's that 40k into the current financial, 50k, sorry, actually 80k, no, good joke, I think, no.
Peter, could you respond to that? So, 50k into the next year to enable community consultation resulting, resulting design work, and then the 400k into the following year?
Yes, but I'd rather pass to Rob for a start to talk about deliverability, because this is the same type of issue around-
It's an alignment issue.
Can it be done, rather than can it be funded?
So, I think when the long-term plan was set for this one, the intention was that it was going to be a repair and sadly, it's after the engineering report undertaken by Becker, it's a rebuild. The land there has shifted as a result of the earthquakes causing drainage issues, so there was an attempt to realign the re-turfing, as you rightly said, with a rebuild of the facility. So, my recommendation with respect to the deliverability of the project was to leave the annual plan as proposed, but there is the potential possibility to advance works a year, which would be in line with what you have suggested.
So, you're agreeing to the 40k ahead in the, 50, sorry, I'm reducing it, 50,000 moving it into the 16-17 year? Because I, can I suggest to you that deliverability is not an issue around that, that is around consultation? And it shows, as we've said very clearly to the community, that this is an important project and we are saying we'll look at the 400k within the annual plan project, annual plan review.
Yeah, no, that sounds fine.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Can I just check on that figure? Like, so we've got 48,000 for Limwood-Wollston Pool, which is a much bigger project, and we've got 50,000 for this, so do we need more for the Limwood-Wollston Pool? Because when I look at the two-
We've already done and dusted the pool, so-
Well, why is this one so high?
There's an element also for the first one around potentially some of the funding coming out of ROPEX, so there's another proviso on the Limwood Pool.
Right, so you're confident you've got this as-
Well, if they weren't, they wouldn't have it there, Yanni.
Okay, so-
So, on that one, it was the 50 coming forward, but the 400 staying.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, that's-
I'll second the amendment, by the way.
Okay, so that's moved, councillor Jones seconded, Pauline Cotter, I'll put the amendment. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That's carried, thank you. And, next one? Worsley, Cashmere Intersection, funding to remain as an AP, staff will investigate implications of neighbouring developments, e.g., it should be Cashmere Adventure Park.
No, it is Christchurch.
Is it?
Yep.
Is it? I've always called it Cashmere Adventure Park.
So have I, it's the slip and tummy.
Oh, okay, my apologies. I withdraw and apologise.
Something for Christchurch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Not only do we have the Christchurch Adventure Park, but the developments along the hill from Kennedy's Bush, West Wallen, which keeps growing, Worsley Spur, and we have the new development, I can't remember the name, between Worsley and Kennedy's Bush, which is going to be up and running shortly. Many years ago, the Hoon Hay-Worsley intersection was offset to stop cars running through for safety reasons, but right along the Cashmere and Tourist Roads, the growing traffic's a real problem. The Christchurch Adventure Park will be the absolute pinnacle of what it does in the southern hemisphere for visitor and economic benefit. We've got to have it right, the entrance, it's about visitor experience, and so I would like and feel like I'm sure will support me to have this in line, this improvement for this intersection in line with the start of the opening of the Christchurch Adventure Park. It's not only economic and visitor, but it's also the community and the social benefits that this will bring, because it's not just about mountain biking, it's walking, it's got the luge, there's a whole lot of things happening there, but it's visitor experience is absolutely number one when you are doing something and I think this would be a lot better when we, if we can get this intersection right, so the visitor experience is right from the start. So, I'd really like this to consider.
What are you actually suggesting, Tim?
Well, if it could be put in line with the opening or the development of the Christchurch Adventure Park, so one comes with the other.
Yeah, let's hear from Dave.
The comment there that we've got, that we will actually relook at it, we've got an intersection programme and you will know it goes through the regional land transport programme, so it's got to go into that three-year programme. So, we look at priorities around vehicle numbers, we look at priorities around safety and we've got all these black spots through here, so what we're doing is we're suggesting we look at that in light of the additional development that's going to come and that may change a priority list around those. We are saying, though, that it would have to, because I don't think we want to proceed without NZTA funding, it would then have to go as an amendment to the regional land transport programme, and so what we're saying is we're just going to look at the priority list, which is where you should be looking at, or I believe, you know, road safety, vehicle numbers, so those are the things that actually set that priority list and we'll look at that development in light of that. So, it may bring it forward and then we will put it into the appropriate plan so that we get it, so that it aligns. And that's really what that comment's about.
I think that supports what Tim and I want to see, because clearly this, the Christchurch Adventure Park, that project, the whole development came in following our long-term plan and now for certainly Tim and myself as councillors for Spade and Heathcote, this is a priority, as we've indicated. So, if there's a way for council staff to do that, I think that should get us across the line, because the whole of Cashmere Road, of course, needs some attention as Tim and I-
Exactly, and there are a lot of other activities happening along that Cashmere and we are looking at that at this point in time, but there are criteria around how you prioritise this. We don't have money to do the whole lot of them, it's no different to any road maintenance issues.
Just as a heads up, following from what Paul said a while ago about the development when you're spending $100 million on a building or whatever, one of the criteria should be that how that affects the development, i.e. whatever it is, because when you go somewhere to see something, it's about visitor experience and if you suddenly have to go through roadworks or it affects your visitor experience, so there are certain projects that will have an added, I suppose, criteria or added complication, so I think that should also be put into-
But we're also bound by the regional transport plan in terms of criteria, aren't we?
Yeah, and we can get what we believe is going to get generated by that, we can add it into the form and look at that reprioritisation and that's really, I suppose, what that comment was made.
We have to use the criteria that they use, so that's the safety and the impact.
And we'll just see that change.
And also, the Christchurch Adventure Park's got a number of stages, so we'll have to look at what those stages are and when they'll be developed. I understand we're going to develop the recreational facilities first, accommodation later and so we'll look at that and program that, so it's appropriately addressed. But it is significant in the annual plan, so it's showing that we are making a commitment to that project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. South West Leisure Centre, again, the council aiming for completion in early 2019 with current funding allocations consistent with this.
Very good. Mayor, may I ask several questions regarding to this one?
Please ask some questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just to be confirmed, I think that's still very important. I just want to ask staff, these, the South West Leisure Centre is cover sports, recreation, the recreation centre only, or cover the New Home Bee Service Centre and Library?
My understanding, that decision hasn't been made. We're going to go out to the community and ask whether there's a combined one or whether there's going to be two separate. We believe we've got a policy and council's got a policy that if we can combine together, it's going to be cheaper long-term to operate. We are looking at joint centres. If it's going to delay the project, that may be another reason why you may want to separate it and so we need to talk to our community about that, about what's the best. If we combine it and it's going on Dindon Park, it adds some complexities around that and that's why some of the delay is, however, it then centres it right beside bus stops and there's pros and cons of a number of options that we need to talk to the community about.
Yes, thank you so much for the answer. So, that's why my concern is, we concern is both facility. In here, your particular highlight is only the kind of South West Leisure Centre, you didn't mention the New Home Bee, the service and the library, the kind of facility, but how come, will it be delayed or not?
Sorry, we'll just add those words, new, where it says South West Leisure Centre and New-
Home Bee.
Home Bee.
Service Centre and Library.
Service Centre and Library.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's absolutely crystal clear.
Thank you, yeah. Oh, a second question is, if we clarify these two facility, but based on the long-term plan, you know, and also I reviewed, regarding to these two facility, each one, what is the construction timeframe? I assume, whether you can say yes or no? The new service centre and the library, the overall construction time period, based on your long-term plan, is one year only, however, the South West Leisure Centre construction time period probably need to take two years, am I right?
Yeah, the construction project programme for this project has construction starting the very end of next year, 2017, concluding towards the end of 2019. Now, that's put together for the leisure centre, standalone, then the library and service centre, which there's some overlap, but that as it presently stands, they're sitting as two different project lines. So, at some point, if it can be facilitated on the same site, that would be pulled together as one project. So, I think with a, you know, with a construction start time of late next year is still, you know, I would argue quite ambitious from a point today where we, you know, we don't have confirmation of land, design, or whether we're amalgamating the library service centre and, you know, leisure centre into one site. So, my recommendation and advice would be to leave it as here and I still think that's an ambitious programme that will take some doing to get across the line as we've got articulated in the annual plan.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Denell Park, staff report back with costs to resurface the Denell Park tennis and basketball courts in time for the finalisation of the 2016-17 annual plan.
Okay, yes, I've had a conversation with Andrew Rutledge over this and the Burdley's residents. It looks like it can be done within budgets, but we'd need to confirm that. It's languished over ownership between Sarah and us.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I know.
You know all that.
I know.
So, it looks like moguls, if we can get that resurfaced, you know, there's a growing area around there, so that's great.
That's good. And same with Wynoni Park.
Yeah.
Same with Wynoni Park.
Yeah, Wynoni, that's about community there and we're building that new centre, so it would make sense, NRL possibilities with, Tim might have something to add on this. I've consulted Actus, Canterbury Rugby League, Tim, Andrew, Andrew Rutledge, they're all supportive, so I don't know whether you'd like to say something.
Well, this is all about community for us as a council and I think it's the difference between bringing, with the possibility of bringing these guys out to this community, rather than the other way around, and I think for that particular community, absolutely wonderful and as a facility for them, full stop, so, thanks, Glenn.
So, this is in budget?
Of course.
Yeah. You could double check with Andrew, but it's been double checked?
I can leave you with the CP.
Just take it, he said-
What do you mean? It's what she said.
You just say, thank you. So, it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be noted, it's already on budget, is that right?
But can we get a list of the sports grounds for renewals? Like, this came up at our borders well and we were told that there's a programme, but we haven't seen the list, so in the same way that we're not allowed to prioritise streets, I find it a-
Yanni, 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 please, 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 it's not that you're not allowed to prioritise streets, it's just that that process will occur between now and the sign-off on the, on the plan. We're putting out a draft for public consultation, we'll get feedback from our local communities, we will debate all of these with our community boards who are going to be representing the views of their own communities and then we will be making a decision as to the, as to the actual annual plan that we'll sign up to.
I just want to understand, because will be a list of streets, a list of parks that are going to be renewed?
Have done now?
And in terms of consulting with our community, it would be really useful to be able to say, here's what the list is.
You know that.
That's the only point I'm making.
Then that would be done for the, that should be done at the community board level, shouldn't it?
We don't, we haven't had access to that information. So, we're just told today that this is on budget and that's great, but it's under a programme level where we actually don't know what other ones-
And that is the issue, we've got a, we've got an enormously challenging task with the size of our capital programme and as I say, we've got a new process in place where I've got a lot of confidence in how things are being prioritised, but these individual ones will be investigated as part of the process that we now go through. The next one was fees and charges, recreation and Yanni's raised that staff investigate reducing the fees and charges for one year for the outdoor pool facilities to encourage more participation in recreation, including $2 entry fee and/or free for children. So, that's, that's fine, that can go on the list of things that can be investigated. It's not as straightforward as it looks, obviously, because our outdoor pools are at capacity and on hot days already, so when they're at capacity on hot days, you wouldn't really want a queue of people trying to get in for a cheap swim and actually not making it even through the door. So, it's a balancing act with all of these things, but we do want to ensure that our children learn to swim too, so.
Madam Mayor, just to add to councillor Johansson and perhaps provide some more confidence around this, he raises a really good point and I think part of the transition of IT systems and GIS between Skirrt and the work that's happening there may in the future provide better clarity and visibility-
It will.
-to you with this.
Yeah, it is unfortunate, because we don't own all of our infrastructure at the moment. We've got a whole stack of it over at Skirrt, it's got to come back to us with a whole management, asset management regime in place. There's quite a bit of work to be done, but things will improve and I mean, certainly, I feel a lot more confident sitting here today than I did two years ago, so it's, it's much better in that regard. Andrew?
So, just in terms of this number nine that we're talking about with the fees and charges particularly for the pool entering, there's more work that's able to be done throughout the consultation period, so that we would be, I mean, I think there's probably a desire to look at the affordability of particularly the summer pools.
Yeah.
But clearly, we don't want to do something that's going to cause a bigger problem than affordability.
Yeah.
As long as we can be confident that that work will be done, so that we can find the correct balance between affordability and overcrowding, then that's good.
Yeah, and I think the affordability issue is, yeah, yeah, affordability is the key thing, it really is, yeah.
I'm sure there'll be ways of making sure, you know, I think it's a great thing that, especially in hot days, that our pools be full and if we have to close them because of numbers, we would, there'd certainly be ways of keeping, keeping kids safe at the pool. You may have to close the gate off, but, and I see, and so I'm certainly very pleased to see this up. I see there is another option too, and that is that there'll be a 25% discount for customers with community services cards, so I guess that's an option too, which you will also hear about.
But that's currently-
That's the last bullet point under the, under the, but so, yeah, I think having this investig- That's the last bullet point under the, under there. But so, yeah, I think having this investigation will, will be really helpful so that in fact we can make sure that every kid can learn to swim.
Just clarifying, Leanne, in terms of fees and charges for swimming pools, is there any proposed increase in the fees list that we have got before us?
Please move forward. Thanks, Phil. I've got extra.
A $2 goes to $2.50 and a $3 goes to $3.50?
$3.10 goes to $3.50 for children. It's about a 13% increase. And $5.80 for an adult goes to $6. So it's a 3.4 increase.
I just wonder if there's any real benefit in increasing them at the moment. What's the assumed additional revenue and is it even significant?
About quarter million dollars.
$250,000.
$226 for the children's pools.
No, this is not for the amendment. It's just for the proposed, just on the proposed increase.
So the increase of 40 cents is $226,000?
That's over all of our swimming pools. It's not just the outdoor pools.
So, okay, that's the increase. So what's the current revenue and what's the new revenue?
I haven't got that detail with me at the moment. I've got the, but I can, give me five minutes and I'll give it to you.
Yeah. Can we come back to that? Because I just think that I'm staggered by that figure actually.
But can we, I mean, the thing is, is that we can deal with it in the context. In fact, what we could do.
We'll get it with the situation.
We've got that staff investigate reducing the fees and charges. These are for outdoor. So that staff investigate affordability of, of our fees and charges for, for swimming. So, and then specifically reducing the fees and charges for one year for the outdoor pool facilities. Because I mean, I, I agree, but doing it today is in exactly the same position as some of these others. We need to look at the overarching policy of what's subsidized by the rate paying base and what's paid by people going through the door. I tend to agree that there's a difference between children and adults even.
I agree as well, but I'm just intrigued by that figure, Mary, because that assumes about half a million visits to the pools a year.
Yeah, that would be right.
That's right?
That would be right.
Okay. So let's have a look at it because I don't think we should be putting fees up.
Investigate the affordability of our fees and charges for, for swimming and recreation facilities. No, no, no. Leave that. Sorry.
I was just going to suggest you could take outdoor out because actually, I mean, it's actually pool facilities. And the reason that this was treated was the proposal to increase the Templeton Pool quite considerably, which was an outdoor pool. But I think if staff are going to go do work on it, then actually you might as well just do it over all the pools.
Yeah, because the Templeton people have actually paid for a big chunk of that.
The staff investigate the affordability of our fees and charges for pool facilities, including reducing the fees and charges for one year for outdoor pool facilities to encourage more participation, da, da, da.
Yep.
And, and report by the 30th of June, well, and report in time, report in time for the finalisation of the 2016-17 annual plan. Is that all right?
Including the option of keeping the fees as they are.
But, well, yeah, that's all right.
Are you thinking reducing fees or not increasing fees?
Yeah, yeah, that would be good.
So it's a possibility of not increasing the fees?
The possibility of reducing fees or not increasing fees.
Yeah, okay.
Full stop, really.
Yeah. You can take the other stuff out.
Doesn't need to be for one year? Okay. So, so take what out? Or not increasing fees for, for the pool? For our pool facilities?
For our pool facilities, yeah.
For pool facilities. Yeah.
And the other stuff can just happen as part of that process.
Full stop. Yeah. Yep.
Just the wording there, we need to change that last line.
No, that staff investigate the affordability of council fees and charges. So change out of council fees and charges for pool facilities, including the possibility, including advice on reducing the fees or not increasing fees. Yeah. Yeah. Reporting back in time. Yeah. Andrew?
Yeah, I think this is a really realistic way of dealing with this. I mean, clearly there's some discomfort around the increase in fees that's proposed. Those of us that have got summer pools in our wards, I'm sure will be very aware of some of the issues around affordability. I certainly had a number of people talk to me about affordability at the Littleton Pool over this summer. The fact that we're able to have an informed debate about this with some, some proper advice means that we'll get to a good conclusion on it. And I don't doubt that those communities that have got concerns around this, where the outdoor pools in particular, boards, will engage in the process with the community boards as we go through the consultation process as well.
Sorry, David and then Phil.
Thank you. Look, I support the thrust of this bit of work, but I think the original wording that was up there sort of gave a little bit more impetus to outdoor pools. And I would not like to see that sort of aspect of it watered down in an overall investigation on the affordability of pool facilities. So I would prefer to see a specific reference to getting more viable usage of our outdoor facilities. And I'm just a bit worried that this report may come back with as an overall picture of fees with pools and outdoor pools just get absorbed into the whole sort of context of things.
Yeah, I think that it's, it's about not reducing the fees for all of our pools, particularly for children. And it's about reducing the fees for outdoor pools. I mean, they're the two things that we wanted to really look at.
I thought the original wording was perhaps a little bit more specific and I think we've watered it down a bit too much.
Can I just say?
Not relativities between indoor and outdoor pools. It's the, and the impact on indoor and outdoor pools. Because the indoor pools, as we've heard, are under pressure anyway because we've, we don't have enough. And the outdoor pools have pressure on them already, but only on really fine days.
And can I say?
Yeah.
I tend to agree with what David is saying and I just don't want to lose the concept, the specific request really that of investigation for low price. I think a $2 was up there. So there was another part up there which I would still like incorporated. So in fact, that is included in the investigation. And it was around the pool prices for children being, was it $2 was up there? I just would like that.
Oh, it's $2 for adults and free for children is what it said.
Okay. Well, that's, that, those low prices, especially for the, that's where I guess we're, and I agree with David, we're sort of losing sight of a few things. But the, and Yanni could tell me if I'm wrong, but the initial request really was about lower prices for outdoor pools per se. And we've kind of like lost that now.
That's true, but it was also to encourage, and the advice that we've already had is that when the pool, when the sun, when it's hot, the pools are at capacity. So it's not going to encourage more swimming. It's going to encourage more queuing. And that's, you know, and that's the advice we need to get back is detailed advice on the impact that it would have. Because sometimes, you know, and because of my prior life, you get unintended consequences of things that, things that sound good. It sounds fantastic to do that, but the unintended consequence might be to ruin the experience for everyone.
Given we had that advice, I thought I'd seen that in an earlier.
Yeah, it came through last night. So, but look, let's, let's get the investigation.
Can we be sure though that the investigation will cover the issue that Phil has raised? Because what I would hate would be, I mean, clearly there's some support. If it's possible for reduction in entry fees for outdoor pools, what we need is to make sure the advice that comes back actually supports a good, robust conversation about that at the right time.
Okay. Why don't we change, instead of Andy, impact on, why don't we say with, with reference to both indoor and outdoor pools, but it's a separate advice on the two. Because one will have an impact on the other. If you reduce the price of indoor pools, then it will obviously, it may make some of the outdoor pools not viable.
And I've heard the discussion, so I can assure that that's what.
So can I just say, I think based on the advice that we received back, and the mayor made the point that because we got fees and charges so late in the piece, it was almost impossible to actually make significant changes. But based on the initial advice, it did seem, and you know, I wanted a dollar for children, $2 for adults, $5 for a family, just as a one year thing to address some of the mental health issues, but also just something positive around the pools that are coming back on. But I think actually it's better to get a wide ranging staff report into this so that we don't get those unintended consequences. I think staff have had a pretty clear direction around a variety of different mechanisms that we might use. But I think the really important thing is that we don't send a signal that we're unnecessarily increasing the charges, which is what's in our draft proposal, without thinking about what that means. And given that the children's ones were going up 13%, which is, you know, six times as much as other charges for, I don't know, passenger ships or whatever else it might be. So it was just the perception is that we care about the fees and charges around swimming pools. We care about making sure that it's affordable and that they're accessible and we want staff to do more work.
Yeah. David?
Look, I'd just also like to just, well, that's not perhaps part of this wording, but just to recognize the fact that in the eastern suburbs and Wollstone area, there have been local groups that have the dollar pool concept. And I think we need to also, in our investigation, just recognize that community project and continued support for, for that, for those groups that are doing that sort of fundraising for some of our old school pools and things, which they are sort of encouraging, being encouraged to use as sort of dollar pools, getting kids into swimming, particularly in the eastern suburbs where there are no public pools at this stage. So just recognizing that and continuing funding for that particular community, those particular community groups that do promote that project.
Could we also add to that, that we look at ways, perhaps with the community boards, of opening the pools later in the season? So Tehapool, for example, closed in the daytime from mid February.
Yeah, but that's not fees and charges.
No, I know. But if, for example, the community board wanted to fund the later opening of the pool, the later closing of the pool, so it closed sort of end of March, ways in which that could happen?
But it's not fees and charges. We should deal with that separately. Yeah. But I mean, I think everyone's heard that because everyone was deeply concerned that the pool wasn't available on the hottest day of the year because it wasn't available till after school hours.
School's been changed.
Yeah. So I don't think we want that to happen again.
And once again, I would encourage people to look to Littleton as a really good example of where the Time Bank and the community have stepped up to make that.
Yeah, that's right. Absolutely right.
That's what I'm just wanting to replicate in other areas.
Yes. All right. So now apparently there's another amendment that Paul, you've sent through, which is signaled, but I'm going to get a costing on it for you and a rates impact.
Can I just actually just add to that just slightly? Because it is more around some flexibility in the coming year because we are in an ever changing environment. Things do crop up through this whole regeneration.
Yeah, but it's $4 million to go on budget.
I'm actually reconsidering that, that amount, maybe, maybe a couple of million.
No, well, yeah, seriously.
Any advice on that?
Seriously.
This is an election.
An old trick. In terms of capacity.
Well, just take the adventure park as a classic example.
Yes, which we funded through Development Crime Search and a particular approach that we approved as a council. So just because.
We could actually look to at some of the other projects that we have on, on board. It may not get delivered in this next timeframe. So there is a floating legacy fund that actually is there that you can actually.
We've got Capital Endowment Fund.
We've got the Capital Endowment Fund. We've got access to, I mean, we've got access to borrowings. If we make a decision during the course of the year that we can go out to consult on it, if it's required to be consulted, if it's not required to be consulted because it's not regarded as significant in terms of the plan.
Glad you brought up the Capital Endowment Fund because if you actually read what's proposed, that the council's going to continue borrowing from it and the work that we're doing in the Capital Endowment Fund Working Group, how that's going to affect the annual long term plan.
Actually, just to speak to it, I mean, we actually have got a legacy fund. It's called the Capital Endowment Fund.
And it's a lot more than $4 million?
And it's the interest.
But if you read what it says in the annual, in the annual plan.
We're spending the interest each year, or we can spend the interest each year. And we've broadened the categories upon which we can spend it. So it's now community, environment, innovation and economic development, which covers pretty much everything.
That hasn't been signed off.
Yes, it has. We signed it off about.
No, we haven't.
Yes, we have.
I'm wondering, Paul, whether, you know, making the, the general statement at this stage is sufficient to allow matters to proceed.
One other point?
Another point, yes.
And it is, again, we have raised it through this process and it is around the coastal pathway. And I am just quite concerned and the board is quite concerned with the small amount of funding that's been put on for the next couple of years, considering that all the major works are happening over the next couple of years around the Littleton Sumner Corridor works, the eroding projects that are going on around there and making sure that there's enough funding on there to actually pick up the coastal pathway projects at the same time.
Can I get Rob to reflect on that one?
Obviously, this is a new one for us, just passed to us. So you might have to give us a minute or two.
No, we raised this at the informal conversation.
Yeah, and we've agreed. And that's why, that's why it's written into the consultation document as saying this. We are looking into possible partnerships, alignment with other work and any other ways we can get this work completed more quickly.
It just actually identifies a 153,000 in the coming year and only 209,000 in the following year. And I don't think that's going to be enough to pick up some, some alignment with the coastal pathway projects.
We've brought, we've pushed out the final stage because we now expect construction of the final stage to start in mid 2018, when we expected it to open in mid 2018. And the reason for that, there are many reasons for that, as, as people know. And it's not, it's not a question of the money. It's a question of the capacity to deliver the project. So we have said we're looking into possible partnerships, alignment with other work and any other ways we can get this work completed more quickly. And I believe that within the next three months, if that, if, if that analysis is undertaken and it does enable us to put more on budget for particular programs or for particular programs of work to deliver part of the coastal pathway, then we are very open to that. In fact, we'd prefer that. But what we don't want to do is what we've done, what we did last time in the long term plan, was put a wish list of projects on budget of which there were over $400 million worth of which could not be delivered.
No, we all get that, that point. It's just making.
I know everyone gets the point, but nobody's prepared to, to finally sort of say, well, my project may not be in the position to proceed. And if it is in a position to proceed and we can identify that before the 30th of June, then we can sign it up for the annual plan as it is with all of the other projects. Phil?
Look, I agree with Council on Dell's concerns and the idea though of floating a legacy fund and establishing one. And maybe that needs more work, but it certainly reminds me of the importance of the availability of our Capital Endowment Fund, which we have. And so that, perhaps that is, that is part of what you're talking about, Paul. But we've already got that and we need to ring for it.
I think Paul's pulled that off. So.
No, I've pulled it off, but it is, you know, there's work being done around the Capital Endowment Fund as we all know and things and how that operates could change. So we're just going to be dispute.
Well, hang on. I think the $4 million legacy fund has gone, the floating legacy fund. You're not going to move that. So now we've, now we've come, now we've come to the coastal pathway.
So we just get some wording around that would be, just, it just sends a good signal to our community. They've already raised.
I don't know what part of, we are looking into possible partnerships, alignment with other work and any other ways we can. I don't know what part of, we are looking into possible partnerships, alignment with other work, and any other ways we can...
Perhaps actually just bring that up to...
Get this work completed more quickly, but by the, by the time we get to the, oh, actually, why don't we go back right to the beginning, go back to the, um, beginning of this section? And if we go, um, early deliverability of projects, including the Wollstone-Linwood Pool, and, and any part of the coastal pathway project.
Look, it just seems a good signal, that's all it is.
Which is this is a...
I know, I know, Legally Caromed's done very well.
Having a hundred and fifty-three thousand on for the coastal pathway, when you've got major construction, twenty million dollars being spent in the same corridor in the year, and we've just seen the repairs being done in part of the section without any opportunity to align the coastal pathway, because there's a lack of funding or lack of resources.
Well, I think Fortune Hogan did a whole section of the coastal pathway.
And that's worked really well.
And the coastal pathway is terrific.
But in terms of some of the work that's happening in the more complicated stages, and we've got the Sumner, actually with the temporary footpath that's now five years old and degrading quite quickly, we know that a hundred and fifty-three isn't gonna actually do it, and so...
Can we please put the St Albans, um, two years up here as well?
Yeah.
Uh, well, the thing is just that, everyone, everyone understands that it's hugely challenging, because what we're doing is we're trying to identify, you know, possibly for the first time since the earthquakes, what can in fact be delivered, you know, and that's, it is challenging, because all of us want things to be happening more quickly, but we have proven over and over again that we don't have the capacity to deliver on the capital program, and, you know, there was a great, universal agreement at the LTP that we would review the capital program, right, so, so would somebody like to, um, uh, move and second that group of, um, notes, moved by Phil, seconded by, oh, I'll take Pauline, since it's down the other, other ward.
PC, PC.
And I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, all those opposed say no, that's carried, and now we should let staff go away and do some work on that, um, and then we will be in a position to, um, yeah, we'll be in a position to come back, so we'll just let you have as much time as you like, we will go on to the other items on the council agenda, um, and I, I don't know, would you like to indicate how long you think you'll need?
So, so the process I'll go through now is taking those changes that have come through, which seem to be, um, relatively insignificant or material, hopefully from an audit perspective, if you go away, we'll work them through, see how we, how we have to change the paper, um, make sure that we can get audited across and come back with an audit report, um, if that doesn't happen, I'll obviously be coming back to let you know, but I'd hope that that would be able to be done by, um, your post-lunch start, whatever time that might be.
Okay, so, so shall we aim to have a lunch break at one o'clock and come back at two, is that...
Yep.
Or is, or shall we aim to twelve-thirty to one-thirty, or?
Ten-thirty, ten-thirty.
I think it's half and half.
Twelve-thirty to one-thirty?
Get on with it.
You're exhausted, Paul.
Well, I don't mind making it twelve-thirty to one, but I wanna give people enough time to do what...
Well, if they go away, we perhaps carry on with maybe some of the other parts, we can get on with them.
That's what we're gonna do.
Twelve-thirty to one-thirty. And just have a half an hour break.
One-thirty, um, I, I could try and get here by one, but, um...
No, one-thirty, okay, no, no, I don't, I don't want try, I want one-thirty, one-thirty.
If we carry on with our council agenda, we can come back at one-thirty.
Thank you, all right, so the next item on the agenda is nine. Uh, central city landmark heritage grant approval for a hundred and seventy-six Oxford terrorists, the former Midland Club building, particularly like that, because I used to have coffee there every day, oh, every Friday, I'm, what was that, Cafe Roma? Cafe Roma, favorite, you'd like to move that, Andrew?
I would like to move it, I mean, this is a, um, a large project, it's a large grant, um, it's significant, and, um, yeah, I encourage councillors to support the recommendation from, um, the committee.
You'd like to second it?
I'd like to second it, and I think, you know, just bearing in mind that we've got very few buildings that are left in the central city, and something with, uh, some strong character of the, of our past, pre-earthquake, I think this will send a really good signal to the rest of Christchurch.
Okay, so I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Item number thirteen, intersection design policy review for people with disabilities who would like to move that, uh, Phil, seconded by, um, Glenn, is there any discussion, Yanni?
Um, just, I don't know if we have staff here for this, but we just want a clarity around what the feedback was from the disability advisory group, so all we're told is that they've considered it, but it would actually be good to know actually what their feedback was, I should say that it's, um, very hard to read, um, you know, and, I mean, it is a bit ironic that we're talking about, um, disability guidelines, um, and, and we've got something that, you know, for some people is actually almost impossible to read, but it would be good just to know, um, and this can just come back as a memo, I don't wanna hold this up anymore, but it would be really good to know what the disability advisory group's response was to this policy.
Well, the disability advisory group did consider the policy, would you like to say that?
They did, um, and at the time they were considering it, the disability advisory group was in, in transition, some new members were coming off, as you know, Yanni, and, and new members coming on, um, it certainly has been discussed with the disability advisory group, and overall, they certainly had supported the policy. You're right that in the report, that's not referred to, but, um, in fact, they did discuss it, just as did the other disability advocacy groups, like, uh, for example, the Blind Foundation, yeah, so, and they're listed in the report, so there was, what I'm saying is it was clear discussion with that group, and I have sought that assurance from staff.
Hi, Tim.
Paul, please.
Um, they, uh, sorry, Paul and then Tim.
This may, and I may foreshadow a slight amendment, because, um, there is a group that I met just recently, and they come and present to the CHED committee on the seventh of April, uh, called Be Accessible, and if we're wanting to be the most accessible, accessible city in the world, or start leading in that direction, uh, there may be some, uh, guidelines they have, which could accredit us, accredit us, like, must like a six, uh, green star rating for a building, this is their rating that, that cities will be rated upon, and so I just wonder if some of that work could be fed into, uh, this, this, uh, program here.
Um, does, does, do one of staff wanna, or shall I just take Tim, because I've got Tim and then Phil?
I think what would be a great help to us if, if in the report, that it is, the feedback is included from that, that group, and I don't know why it never has been, but it's...
I was actually gonna say that to the chief executive, so that in future, when we get reports, can we actually have the feedback from the groups that we consult with, so that when we consult with the disability advisory group, that we actually say in the report, the response, the disability advisory group was X, Y, and Z, because that gives us clarity over the consultation process as well.
Yeah, yes, um, yeah.
Can I just reply to Paul's question too, look, there has been informal discussions with Barrier Free, I think they're the group you were referring to, and our council...
No, no, it's not Barrier Free, it's actually Be Accessible, it's, it's like a, uh...
So I'm sure they could be included too, Paul, um, because, yeah, we, uh, there's every reason for the different disability advisory groups to be together, but council will really get good advice...
Barrier Free?
No, it's not Barrier Free, no, Be Accessible is...
Is Barrier Free.
There's a, there's a number of organisations, Barrier Free is the organisation who a number of council units use, and Tim can probably tell us specifically.
They're more the umbrella group for, uh, for the group.
Be Accessible is different, it's, it's just a organisation that will rate, uh, individual cities on actually how accessible they are, and, um...
Barrier Free do that.
It's many bear, bear a glance.
Tim, can you clarify? Yeah.
In the preparation of the report, the, uh, the Blind Foundation and Disabled Persons Assembly were consulted over the detail of the report prior to that coming to both committees, um, the, the group that weren't fully consulted over the content of the report were the, uh, were the Disability Advisory Group, which was the query raised at council two weeks ago, um, I've since spoken to the advisor of the Disability Advisory Group, who told me that they were aware of the preparation of this policy, and they were broadly in support of its preparation, but they weren't consulted over the detail of it, and, and from, from that point of view, they were, they're content with the, content with the direction the policy is taking, and, and so I, I spoke to her about whether they wished us to consult further with them over the policy itself, she didn't believe that was necessary, because they would actually like to be involved in how the policy is then delivered, if council approve it today, so it wouldn't be fair to say they were consulted over the detail of it, but it would be fair to say they were aware of the preparation of it and were broadly in support of the policy.
Well, I think, I think a better process in the future would be to obviously engage them in the process, and then, um, clearly the message is that we, we want them engaged in the delivery as well.
Absolutely, and our apologies for that, that should have happened, and it will happen in future.
Yeah, but, but in future, we'll have that written into the report so that we can be clear.
Yeah.
Brilliant, so, um, we've got a mover and a seconder for this, have we?
Yes, I know that.
No, uh, Phil and, um, I thought I took a mover and a seconder.
Is it the pool?
No, I thought I took Glenn, but, um, anyway, um, Tim, Phil and Tim, I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye, all opposed say no, that's carried, um, item fourteen, car share and electric vehicle policy, oh, yeah, sorry, I, I, look, I should have highlighted in the last one that we actually did consider the issue of, um, uh, a report going to Strategy and Finance, and there's another committee with the matter and its terms of reference, um, then agreement between the chair of Strategy and Finance and the chair of the other committee, the ma, the matter may be referred through the other committee rather than Strategy and Finance, so we've sorted that out, so now if there's an item that comes to Strategy and Finance and it's more appropriate to ITI, then it can be agreed with, um, Rashman, Phil, that it go to ITI.
Right, oh, that's sensible, yeah.
Good, sensible process, right, car share and electric vehicle policy. Who's behind this report?
Please, no, no, Vicky.
That was great, you think?
Sorry, which, which, which committee did it come through?
ITI.
ITI, Phil, do you wanna speak to it?
Pass the back, one of the drivers.
Pass the back, oh, wait, I'll get Vicky too, I don't wanna pass the back.
I just wanna say, I'm really pleased staff have done this work on it, it, it is, um, right, right at the cutting edge of our transport, it's, so it's part of that in car sharing and the electric vehicle thing, and so it's, I think it's really good that, um, council are, you know, right on top of the, um, top of our game with us, but Nick can answer the questions, or Vicky.
And Paul?
I just think we need, we need to front foot the looming future, and be, uh, and really take on board, and actually encourage people to look at new ways of getting around, like the Uber, like car sharing, like electric vehicles, which are coming here fast, and we know what to do with it, I mean, we've gotta get behind this here and, and lead the city into, into a new future.
Yep, this allows us to actually put charging stations and car sharing mechanisms straight without, without having to suddenly go back and find rules and ways in which we can do them, so this is brilliant, the only thing we now need to do is fill them up with electric chargers, which is for a target of, uh, by early next year, at least five fast-charging stations in the Christchurch, greater Christchurch area, and then electric vehicles, and then car sharing, electric car sharing, so this is the nice, um, start, and Paul's right, now we just need to fill them up with electric vehicles.
Very good, uh, Yanni?
Uh, yeah, um, yeah, this, this is a start, I thought we did have agreement at the committee that we would change it from the draft electric vehicle policy to, um, something that reflected the, the contents of it more accurately, which is around actually the charging, um, structures, because it was discussed at the committee that, um, uh, and it may be charging and parking, but it was discussed at the committee that actually there's a lot wider work to be done around an electric vehicles policy, for example, council possibly acquiring electric vehicles, work around electric buses, um, so there were broader kind of goals around an electric vehicle policy for the council, but that this policy...
I know, but if I may just say, a lot of those are encapsulated in the climate smart strategy, aren't they? So we felt they didn't need to be repeated in this one, because that couldn't, no, we didn't wanna do...
Does say adopt the draft electric vehicle policy as a formal statement of position on the use of electric vehicles, association of associated infrastructure on city streets, I mean, I think we're probably splitting hairs to say that it's not a, um, an electric vehicle policy, there will be wider issues that we will continue to come back to.
There will be, there will be, for example...
And we can change the policy.
For example...
We'd have to, anyway.
...policy, should we have a preference for electric vehicles, this is actually about structures on the street and getting those...
I understand that, the only point I'm making is on page one oh nine, the heading of the policy is different to what the council commit, or the committee council recommendation is, so it's right, it's correct, it's a formal statement on the position of the use of electric vehicles and installation of associated infrastructure, no problem, that's great, but when you read the heading of the policy, it makes it seem as though it's a draft electric vehicle policy for the city council, which it's not really, so that's all, I was just trying to clarify that.
So it might just be the draft electric policy, electric vehicle policy for structures on streets?
Yeah, and it's, well, just what it says in the recommendation, the use of electric vehicles and installation of associated infrastructure on city streets.
Well, can we just use that as a tidy up, I mean, you can tidy up the wording of what it is online, but, yep.
Leanne, I wonder if Nick comments on this, because he's pulled it all together and can probably give us some good advice?
Yeah, so the, um, what we tried to do with, um, both of these policies is make them, um, broad and enabling and not too prescriptive, and so I think we, we might get, it might sound like we're getting a bit caught up in the, in the heading there, but, um, essentially what the, when, when we say we're encouraging, uh, the use of electric vehicles in Christchurch, uh, the thing that the, the role that the council primarily will play is the restriction of, of parking and, uh, the, the enabling of, of easements and, and the placement of structures on city streets, um, going forward, how the operational and business models change, we may want, there may be other roles that we can play, um, so, uh, the, the policy or the statement of intent towards the recurring issue of, of the use of electric vehicles and their role on the street is, is tried to, uh, we've tried to sort of encapsulate that in, in this policy by saying, we encourage the use of electric vehicles, but today specifically, um, the, the primary role that council will be playing, uh, will be the restriction of parking spaces and, and the, and structures on streets, we, I'm happy, happy to change the, uh, happy to change the name of the policy to, uh, the, the structures on streets policy, uh, but the, the, we do have a, a, a policy for that within, within the road reserve, for things like retaining walls, uh, garages, carports, so this is meant to sit alongside that, be consistent with that, adhere to those principles, and, uh, adhere to and sit alongside a, a range of council policies as well, so it's meant to sort of sit in, in amongst a, a family of policies that council has that are outward facing, uh, to, to sort of, uh, address the issue of, of electric vehicles when they come along, and by having that statement of position about, uh, encouraging the use of electric vehicles, uh, that broad sort of catch-all is intended to, um, help steer decision-making, when, when there are issues that we maybe don't foresee today that arise, we'll be able to sort of, um, continue with that direction.
Yep, good, all good?
Can I ask you one question?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, regarding to the draft car share policy on one-one-one, page one-one-one, the three-point-one policy statement, three-point-three and three-point-six, this one, I'm not sure, because three-point-three is kind of a focus on the council and also the car sharing organisation, reach an agreement, sign an agreement, but three-point-six, like the, most, uh, car sharing organisation, they need to apply for, with the detail one, and council approve, so a little bit confused.
So, with, with the, with the, with the car share policy, the, um, the, the, the end goal would be to have sort of a, a number of vehicles that would comprise a fleet, so some of those spaces may be designated for the vehicles on council land, and they may, they may strike up deals with private landowners to locate the vehicles on, on, on private off-street parking as well, um, for us to be able to determine what is a legitimate, um, activity of car sharing, we would need, we'd need some sort of discussion and some sort of agreement, uh, to be formalised with the car sharing entity, and, uh, the, the details in there would sort of be the, uh, the assurance we would need, that we would be, uh, giving, giving up, uh, potentially a parking space as consideration, um, which is, which is part of the, sort of the, the broader public realm for something that is to be of the benefit of, of, of the broader public as well, and so those, those sorts of details, uh, would, would need to, would need to obtain from, from the entity. And so those sorts of details would need to obtain from the entity. And so that's just detailed in the policy that this wouldn't necessarily be a given or some sort of free-for-all when we're giving away parking spaces. So it's just something in there that we would need to address on a case-by-case basis with each of the potential car sharing entities.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, it's been moved by Phil and seconded by Vicky. I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, opposed say no, that's carried, thank you very much. Submission on the civil defence emergency management amendment bill. Judith? I'm happy to move this.
Yes.
Danny? Do we want to make a personal submission on this? I personally would like to, I, can I put my name in the box? Advisor of council wishes to make an oral submission, so yes, and advise that the mayor and, depending on whether we go to Wellington or whether we do it from here, it's, and is there anyone else that wanted to in particular, or are you good with me doing it with staff?
Yep, I'm good with you doing it.
Yep, all right, cool. Is there any discussion? Yep, Yanni?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think it's really timely that they are looking at civil defence emergency management. And at the submissions panel, there were a number of things that were raised around just ensuring that, I guess that in terms of being prepared for an event, whether the powers actually were sufficient. So it's one thing to have an event and then suddenly have to respond, but there were some opportunities throughout this legislation, I think, that were certainly quite interesting in that you didn't need a full state of emergency to actually be able to do some of the things that you need to do, both prior to an event and post-event. So I think that was a really, to me, it was a really important point. Also, just that council also was concerned to make sure that there were robust checks and balances on the powers of ministers and that there should be a collaborative co-governance approach. So I think that's quite an important point, that, you know, if there are an increase in powers, there needs to be really clear checks and balances. But fundamentally, I think there were some interesting things in here that would actually enable us to be better prepared and be able to better respond to these events when they are coming or when they happen. And I think that's really positive.
I think the strong message that we can give is that it's better in the transition from response to recovery, that it's a very collaborative model. I think that's, to me, the most powerful lesson learned that we can share with the rest of the country. And I'm hoping that what we say in that regard can lead to some changes in the way the law prevails in the future, so. Glenn, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm just quite taken by four-point-six in terms of recovery and recovery activity and the scope of that and whether this could be stretching it far too far, but whether that could be, for instance, interpreted as covering, say, insurance resolution. Now, if you look at it, it talks about the immediate, medium-term and long-term holistic regeneration and enhancement, but under that, to deal with the consequences of an emergency. And then it goes into further detail, which, to me, that timeline looks quite extensive.
Judith, did you want to comment on that?
Well, the staff in the civil defence area didn't have any issue with the definition of recovery or recovery activity. And these are all just, all the measures aren't, no, that insurance resolution is a matter for the civil defence recovery managers.
You wouldn't think it would fit, but the scope seems quite wide there to just about include. But you're talking about restoring community wellbeing.
I think it would be in the sense of the activities that the recovery manager, or the powers that the recovery manager exercises that are elsewhere.
Okay.
In that, so although recovery activity sounds like it covers a lot in terms of the recovery managers at councils and their powers, it's an extension of the types of things that they do during civil defence, you know, immediate response phase.
Very good.
Just very quickly to add to that, I mean, I applaud you raising that, good on you, Glenn. I think it's probably more a legislative response, certainly referred to, I think, in that C point-two or C two-point, the cultural and physical wellbeing of individuals in their communities. Mental wellbeing could come under that as well, but it's a much bigger issue than that and I think it needs to be dealt with in a different way and a different level.
Yeah.
Very good. But, well, look, thanks to that, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, opposed say no, that's carried. Next one, council submission on local government, New Zealand's Puasai's discussion paper on the State Resource Management System. This is not one that requires a, this is not one that requires a decision about, you know, being represented, an input into the local government, New Zealand's discussion on resource management. And has a particular focus on the areas of continued improvement of the system, improving the clarity of the core statutes within the resource management system and moving beyond evolution. So would someone like to move that? David, seconded by Phil, is there any discussion? I'll put that, oh, Richard! You don't want us to do it, don't do it.
Sorry to jump in, I just did want to raise one matter and it's to do with the council submitted on the resource legislation amendment bill. And that went in some time ago, but as you'll be aware, the Canterbury Merrill Forum was also seeking to lodge a submission. And what you'll find in your report is a copy of the placeholder submission from the Canterbury Merrill Forum. And yesterday I circulated to you a copy of the final submission on behalf of them. Now, that submission is consistent with what we have said as a council. And I realise it's too late, it only came in yesterday and it's too late to get any kind of formal endorsement. But I really just wanted to daylight that with you. And I will have to bring it back to you at a later date to get retrospective approval. So it's just a matter of timing and the way that the organisations function, that we only were in receipt of that yesterday. So I did circulate a copy to you, but I appreciate you probably haven't had the time to prove it, given you're in the middle of everything, so.
Can we just then note the submissions lodged by the urban development strategy implementation in the Canterbury Merrill Forum attachments, in the Canterbury Merrill Forum on a placeholder basis? That one's, theirs is, just put in, yeah, on a placeholder.
There was a placeholder that formed part of the report that came to you, the formal submission I sent to you yesterday. We only received it yesterday.
Note that a further report on the formal submission of the Canterbury, so a separate three, note that a further report on the finalized Canterbury Merrill Forum submission will be provided in due course. Yeah?
Yep, I think that's all we can do, given we only received it. But their intention is to put it in today, so I will need to therefore seek retrospective approval from yourselves. But it is consistent with what we were saying on that matter.
Yanni?
I just wanted to clarify, I guess, whether or not you think we've made sufficient comment on the right for people to be notified. I mean, given what's been happening and we've probably seen it through things like the statement of expectations, the decision-making framework around giving people actually the right to be notified and participate in planning. And I think there was some, there was some sort of small reference around that on page two, page 127. But it doesn't really specifically talk about notification. And I again was kind of concerned with the UDS one, that again didn't seem to really pick up on the rights for people to be involved, particularly where they're affected.
That's a different, that's on a different...
That's on the productivity commission.
That's on the productivity commission's inquiry. They're all asking for slightly different things, Yanni, and it's, I mean, it has been a little bit challenging having these three things all happening at the same time, but...
What does local government, New Zealand, actually do with this?
They are going to produce, they'll produce a document around the feedback from local government throughout New Zealand.
And then?
It'll feed into the government processes, so, I mean, it's probably not a biggie, but I wouldn't have any objection to...
If you look on page two, my concern's really at that top where it says the council supports a proposed step program of reform. And it just doesn't really capture either.
It says the alternative to a massive rewrite from day one. Because what they're looking at is, is do you start from scratch or is it organic? So we're supporting the organic approach, yeah, rather than a, let's start all over again.
That's on step three.
So just having something in there that made reference to supporting the provisions that actually enable people to participate and be informed or be notified, because that's really the direction where it's been going. All the little step changes to the RMA have been to remove people's right to participate and really have a hands-off approach to planning. And I just thought it would be good to have something in there that just made reference to that.
Can we add in a line, maybe, at that, in that introductory paragraph on that page two, basically saying the council supports community participation in planning that affects their local community, something along those lines, so it's, I mean, the thing is that... Yeah, I mean, I think that would be okay, something along those lines, it just has a phrasing around community participation. Because we know that having a more participatory approach to planning is something we're not really experiencing at the moment.
If it helps, there is on page three, the very last line and under step two, a comment which says, however, the council would be concerned with the extent to which the suggested suite of new provisions may include mandatory plan provisions or reduced submission or appeal rights. So there's a fairly clear steer there that the council is seeking to retain the ability for people to make submissions and to lodge appeals.
I think it's wider, to me, it's wider than that. It's basically the professionalisation of planning has meant that, and the lack of notification has meant that people can't participate. So even if you've got a submissions process like we've seen with the hearings panel, there's a lack of resources and capacity at an individual level to really meaningfully participate in those processes alongside the lack of notification. So people that can afford to appeal to the High Court to do a judicial review of notification can, but actually people that are directly affected sometimes won't even have that opportunity. So I personally liked the mayor's suggestion that kind of just made the point that actually community participation in planning is actually a really important principle. And any reforms should take into account the need for people to be notified and participate.
We've got those words and we can add them into the submission and lodge it accordingly.
Okay.
I just wonder as well, in the section on page two, about halfway down, we talked about the valuing the nation's natural capital. And I just wonder if we should extend that a bit, like surely the resource management act is about ensuring that things like groundwater and natural resources are actually retained and that that's key to the whole resource management act, rather than what we've seen with the statement of expectation that development is key at all costs, no matter what the environmental cost? If we could extend that a bit.
Yes, we can add those words in if...
Yeah, that phrase, maintaining them in perpetuity would be also provide significant economic benefits. Seems like there's some words missing because it isn't a sentence that makes sense. Maintaining them in perpetuity would also provide significant intergenerational benefits. I mean, it's not just economic benefits, it's...
It's environmental too.
It's environmental, social, economic, health.
Cultural.
Yeah, wellbeing. You see that one, that phrase?
Yep, we've got that.
Is that all right? All right, so we have a mover and a seconded, so I'll put that motion, all those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no, that's carried. Item number seventeen, proposed stopping of legal road, Avonhead and Gray's Road.
Can I say though, there's a lot of work for us, and I just want to say, we know that staff do some really, really good submission work.
Oh, they do.
No, we appreciate that, and while we can fine-tune our adverts when we're in a hurry with our new plan, I know...
And we did do a staff under pressure for that one because it wasn't on the radar for initial submission. So thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, good point, Phil, thanks. Yeah, proposed stopping of legal road, Avonhead and Gray's Road. Whose committee did this go to? Anyone's? Did it go to a community board?
It doesn't really matter, yeah, doesn't it?
So, okay, proposed, so would someone like to just quickly speak to this and...
Just to clarify, I'm Barry, I'm the author of the report. We've retained Dave Rowland as a consultant to head the project. Dave's been involved with this project since early 2013. And he and Andrew have headed up the, I guess, council at the Environment Court during the Environment Court process. That's just a bit of background to the project. Dave, do you want to speak to the report?
As far as the report's concerned, the stopping of Avonhead and Gray's Road was actually carved up into two sections, section one and section two. That was deliberate on the premise that it was likely to be objections, and yes, there were objections in the council, as I were aware of all those objections. They had been referred to the Environment Court in relation to the first part, which is what we call section two. And that's what is on the table for the council to consider today, which runs from Ron Guthrie Road down Avonhead Road in a westally direction and then back down Gray's Road to George Bailey. And that's the area that will be, the Environment Court has agreed that we can stop and would then be transferred away to the airport company. Section one is from Ron Guthrie through to Russey Road, that's a different outcome. We are waiting at the current time for an Environment Court decision. The indications are that the court will approve that. But like this section, it will be subject to a number of conditions from the court. But they can be quite easily sustained and recommended to the council when we get to that point. What's in front of the council at the current time is that the council approve effectively the same as section two, the declaration under section 349 of the local government act, because there's an exchange proposal with the airport company whereby a land which they own and has been formed and developed as road will then vest in the council as road as part of the total transaction in exchange for what we call section two. There's a cash difference which is mentioned in the report of just over $600,000 in the council's favour. The main thing which we have to be conscious of is that all the transactions are contemporaneously undertaken exactly the same time because that's the way the court has issued the order. So it's entirely over the council to make a final decision on this, I believe, and in my view, it's straightforward. We've done the hard yards, it should have been a simple issue, but it got complicated with the objections.
Would someone like to move this, Rash, Senator Paul, I'll put that motion.
Just, I mean, obviously CSHL directors, this is a deal between the airport, so I'd probably best that. I mean, it's...
Fine.
Well, it's fine, I'm just gonna...
Are you okay with that, Ian?
No, I didn't put you on the spot.
This is a, this is a...
I've got nothing to do with this, I'm sorry.
It was just a bit of...
Proposed stopping of, proposed stopping of a road on the application of CIAL. Proposed stopping of, proposed stopping of a, of a road on the application of CIAL. Do CCHL directors have to step back from the decision? Sorry, sorry.
We sign off on this.
I think, given the nature of the matter, no, I don't think...
Doesn't matter anyway.
You can, you can if you want to.
Yeah, I'm going to. I just wanted to say, I, I'm going to.
Okay, Yanni's, Yanni's out, Vicky's out.
Oh, sorry, it's silly to, but...
Yeah, Jamie's out, right, that's easy. Um, I'll put that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, that's carried. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, item number twenty-nine, disestablishment of the Housing Management Board.
Can I just ask the same question of Ian?
Ian?
I'm assuming that Andrew, Paul and I should step back for this.
We're still on the same matter?
No, this is...
I'm sorry, I've been...
This is the distraction, I'm a distraction tool, I'm sorry.
You're a holiday already here.
Distraction.
Item twenty-nine, the disestablishment of the Housing...
Item twenty-nine, and there is a, um, a, a note from Ian. Maybe, Ian, do you want to join us at the table? And Mary, Mary, do you want to come down as well?
No, no, no.
No?
Footballer, he said I'd like to stay here because I distract him too.
Carolyn and Ian can come to the table. Oh, so that, sorry, I, I, I kind of missed all of this, so it's changed to go through Strategy and Finance, is that right? Sorry?
It seems to me I'm reading a random from Ian, but in fact, the advice, his advice is different. I guess I've got it wrong.
Okay, so, next, Ian, you can take us through your advice.
My, I was asked to, um, have a look at, um, issues around the proposals that were in the last two reports, in principle around, or principally around, um, conflicts of interest, which I have done, um, in the relatively short time available to do it. My conclusion was that, um, the Housing Management Board had the delegated authority to make the decisions that it did in terms of the appointment of council trustees to the, um, Otaatahi Community Housing Trust. But I also have pointed out, um, a couple of areas where we might just need to check, i.e. the process that was used to appoint, um, those members. And I also have come to the conclusion that I don't think, my recommendation would be not to disestablish the Housing Management Board at this point, um, because I think it needs just a little more work, a little more thought into whether or not there are any implications for that, um, one arising from the original delegations, um, resolutions made by the council. As far as I could see, there is still quite some significant work still to be done by the board, and the implications of blending the board's delegations with the terms of reference of, um, a committee. And I just have the feeling from a process point of view that we should make sure that we've covered off those sort of issues before we make a decision whether or not to disestablish the Housing Management Board.
So, um, I mean, that's, that's, yeah, two different things. So, one, um, we were, we were, we were asking for whether the original appointment of council trustees to Otaatahi Community Housing Trust, um, was lawful, and you're very clear that it's not unlawful. So, so that, that matter, um, can, can proceed because we delegated it. But I think that we had decided because the Housing Management Board now needs to have councillors on it that can vote because of conflicts of interest of others, um, we, we would prefer to disestablish the Housing Management Board and, um, and that the, the matters come back through the, um, Community Housing Trust following consideration. Now, I mean, whether it's recommendation from Strategy and Finance or whether it's recommendation from, um, chair does probably neither here nor there, I, I'm not sure.
Can I, can I just, um, add, I did forgot to mention, I forgot to mention that, um, I thought the proposal to appoint two extra members to the board should proceed because that will go to some, some way towards...
But we're not, uh, that was the debate, we're not interested in appointing two people because others are conflicted. It, it raises a question about the, about the sense of the process going forward. They've done the task that they were set up to do, and now decisions can start to flow back through the council. That's, that was, I mean, they were only ever in a temporary position, they were never to be permanently in that position, as I understood it. Sorry?
Possibly, the report that you've got there was written before we got Ian's advice, and Robert's actually put in to try and pull that together. I suppose the, uh, there is a change there on Strategy and Finance, and Robert might be able to talk to about that. It was just that the decisions that are still to be made are more around the allocation of resources, of property, of money, of that sort of thing. So, that's why I think, and I don't want to put words in, in their mouth, but, uh, be, be aware that the report that's on the agenda was written before we got Ian's, and so that's why there's a slight conflict between the two. I don't know, Robert, whether you want to add anything to that?
No, you've described the circumstances. Um, the reason the report, um, recommends as the preferred option that the decision-making goes through Strategy and Finance is to minimize the conflicts of interest that exist. Um, I know that, um, some, some councillors have the view that it should go through the chaired committee, and, and, yes, it could, but the, 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 the situation there is that the chaired committee is chaired by one of the trustees, the chip trustees, and two members of the chaired committee are trustees also. So, the reason that the report, uh, opts for Strategy, going through Strategy and Finance is to try and minimize those conflicts.
Ben and then Ali.
Okay, just on the neither here nor there comment you made there, and in relation to what Robert said, um, if it's not acceptable to go through chaired, which in my view is where the knowledge base and the terms of reference for this work lie, then I don't think it should go, certainly not through Strategy and Finance, it actually should come straight to council. That would be the option. So, if, if it's not going to get support, um, and there's a lot of work still to be done over the Public Work Act, the, the buybacks, et cetera, so that could be an option that we still keep the Housing Management Board going, but if it comes to that point in the discussion over Strategy and Finance, I would rather it come straight to council if it can't go through chaired.
Ali and then Ref.
Thank you. Look, can I just clarify? I thought the issue was that there was a, a suggestion that there was a conflict of interest with regards to Housing Management Board members essentially appointing three of their own to the chip. My understanding was that that was being looked at. If I'm hearing correctly, because I've heard you use the phrase "not unlawful," are you saying it wasn't unlawful what they did? But I'm still not hearing whether there is a perceived or real conflict of interest there, because the next part of what I thought was being looked at was if there was a perceived or real conflict of interest. We couldn't disestablished or shouldn't disestablish the Housing Management Board until we had addressed some of those because there could be, uh, resolutions, procedures and so forth that need to be revisited, and that board needed to still be in place for that to happen. Have I misunderstood something?
No, that, that's principally what I'm saying, that, um, that the board, um, was able to make the decisions it did. However, it does raise the issue of potential conflicts of interest, which I'm saying need to be managed. I'm not saying that, that the whole process is flawed because of it, I'm just saying that the conflicts of interest need to be managed appropriately.
And that's why the board should stay together.
And one of the ways of doing that would be to appoint two extra members to the board. And the other thing I'm saying is that I wouldn't disestablish the board right now because I think the sort of issues you have raised, um, I think there needs to be further thought given to any implications that might arise from that. And, and I can't tell you exactly what they are right now, but I think we need to get, provide you with, with more advice around that.
Okay, thank you. Ref?
Phil, I don't have a particular view on whether it should be established or disestablished, the Housing Management Board. I think for me, the, the main issue is this conflict of interest issue, which is cropping up all over the place. Um, I mean, clearly this should be reporting back to chaired because that's the Housing Committee, um, and the reason it can't be is because you've got people sitting on, on three different things involved in the same process, and that's what we have to sort out. So, I think probably when, when I think about the delegations we gave to the Housing Management Board, they're probably too broad. But I think when the delegation around appointing trustees to the trust was given, I don't, I think there was an assumption that the board wouldn't appoint themselves, that there would be some kind of process, and I think that's really the question. And I don't think that's being resolved.
No, I, I've agreed that we, we probably need to look at that process and see whether or not, um, in particular, we complied with, um, our own policy on the appointments of directors to council organizations.
Uh, Phil?
Um, one of the things you've mentioned is that there's still some important tasks for the Housing Management Board to carry out. So, I wonder, I'm, I'm aware that some of those would be sort of commercially sensitive or anti-commercial, but I wonder if you could just outline those, what they are, whether Carolyn can tell us that, or what, what remains to be done, what should be done, any in suggesting an increased, um, uh, number of members on the board.
So, the, in the terms of reference, the things that are still outstanding, uh, I'm just trying to find them, basically around the 50 million transfer of assets, the signing of the lease would be the two, um, main actions that are still outstanding.
Those are substantial...
Yes.
Issues that we shouldn't delegate, just, you know, I mean, that, that, this is, this is what bothers me, I'm, we did do it, we, we, we did agree, but I don't think anyone really appreciated the, I mean, it actually gives people better protection if it comes back here for sign-off, and, um, which is why I thought we'd agreed...
We're fine with that.
That the disestablishment, um, uh, would proceed, but I can see that there's, there's issues. I mean, the, the trouble was, is that probably the only reason Strategy and Finance is mentioned here is because, um, because Andrew's the chair of the chaired and other members that are on the chaired. So, yeah, it's hugely challenging. Anyway, Jimmy and then Yanni.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. One question. If we, you know, to put two councillors in the, in these, uh, Housing Management Board, so the, there will increase the number from currently four to six, and from now on, you know, during the Housing Management Board meeting to discuss all those issues, whether current three, uh, kind of, of board member, they also become the Otaatahi Community Housing Trust as board members, whether they have to declare a conflict interest or not, depends on the, some specific issue they need to be declared, or all kinds of issues they have to declare is a conflict interest.
Quite often, the interests will be aligned, I'm, I'm sure. It's only where, um, the interests aren't aligned that, um, those councillors who are also on the trust will need to either step back or not take part.
So, it is the heart. Okay, thank you. In that regard, can I?
Andrew can't.
No, that's exactly the point I've been going to make. We haven't recorded that, I'm, I mean, I, I speak for myself, I'm not participating in this discussion because I'm, in, I'm either conflicted or there's a potential, there's a perception of conflict.
No, no, it's the same...
So, that's from my point of view. I don't know what Vicky and Paul are doing, but I just wanted that recorded.
And Paul, uh, Paul, wasn't it? That's the other one? Yeah, so, that's the case. Yanni?
Oh, yeah, no, um, I thought we were going to get a presentation on what's happening with all our housing stuff, because it is, it does feel very, still quite messy, and, and there's lots of different things that have happened and lots of changes that have happened from the Housing Accord through to, you know, the different resolutions we've passed. So, when are we getting that briefing? Um, because I think that would, personally think it would actually help hopefully clarify what the different roles were and what the different actions were that were outstanding, and then we can work out a strategy of how best to do that.
Yeah, we're, we're getting, we're getting that, um, in a couple, there's a recess week next week, so I think it's either the fourth or the eleventh, so it's on, on a Monday, but, um, in, in a workshop, but, um...
Can I just ask, just, Ian, a question? As councillor Cotter and I mentioned in, um, option four, should we then step back from the table? I mean, it's, I know it's ridic, but, you know? Just want to clarify so we don't...
Leave no one at the table.
So, what, there, there were a number of us who expressed concern when the original paper came up. We were deeply concerned that the reason for managing conflicts of interest was to appoint two more members. That didn't appear to be a good way of resolving the problem, it actually reinforced there is a problem, so...
At, at best, it could help, but it doesn't solve the problem.
No, it doesn't solve the problem, and it's...
It just means that, you know, we, we're aware of the issue, two extra would help, plus close management of any conflicting issues.
The delegations to the Housing Management Board are to the group as a whole and not to the individual members. Housing Management Board will make decisions collectively through a formal meeting process. The HMB is subject to council direction and policies, including internal policies, and any legislative requirements relevant to decision-making by the council. So, I mean, to put two more members on because three of them can't make, participate in a particular decision is, you know, it just doesn't work, so, um...
It just, it makes it easier, but doesn't solve it.
But I'm comforted by your statement that although the appointments process, um, may not have been, the, the conflict of interest did not strike down the lawfulness of the appointment of council trustees. Because I'm, I'm very aware, you know, that, that we're in a state of play at the moment, you know, there are things that are happening, and we don't want to hold up progress, but we want a good reporting and decision-making mechanism from here on in. Yeah. Glenn?
Oh, thank you. Just my question over precedent, uh, and, uh, not sending, uh, you know, or not making that, that word part of, say, in this instance, the chaired committee due to conflicts of interest, wouldn't that set a dangerous precedent? I mean, we have members declaring interests on a regular basis.
Yeah.
This committee's, uh, large enough that it will sustain a quorum most times without three people, so I would, you know, people have conflicts over heritage grants or some other things. Wouldn't it set a dangerous precedent to now rule out, uh, what's an essential part of the terms of reference on the grounds that some may have...
Which, which party are you saying we're going to rule out? I mean, I'm, I'm saying that conflicts of interest issue, as you rightly point out, crops up fairly regularly, and it's a matter of how you manage that, you make sure that, um, the decision-making process is appropriate.
Talking about the, uh, decisions, uh, made concerning the trust, uh, not being able to be considered or recommended from the, the chaired committee on the grounds of interests.
The reason...
Given, given what remains, given what remains, is there any harm in having it reported directly to council?
Yeah, that, I just...
Because it, it solves the...
Because of the gravity of what remains.
That covers all the...
Yeah, so, and, uh, what, what we've got is entering into negotiation, signing a lease agreement, um, signing a transfer or an assignment of council facilities management contract, um, and I think that, are they the only two that remain?
The lease. Yeah, so, to, well, basically to ensure the new company becomes eligible for registration as a chip, 11.5.5, the technical reference. Yep, the, the, um, IRRS working to show that they get that, the lease and the facilities management, yeah.
So, um, so if we go back to the reservation and approve the disestablishment of the Housing Management Board effective from the date of resolution, approve that decisions remaining to be made concerning the establishment of the Housing Trust, um, and, and lease arrangements, isn't it? And, what is it, and other matters?
Other matters.
Other matters, yeah.
Perhaps having a full stop after council.
That's right.
Yeah.
And deleting the rest.
Are made by council. All right?
Yep.
So, um, and that way it's reported directly back to here, but I, I... So, in that way, it's reported directly back to here, but I think I'm also just, you know, because I'm aware of what's kind of the process that's going on at the moment, is I think we actually need to confirm the council appointments on the, on the CHED. I think it just gives them cover. I mean, whether we particularly agree with the process or not, I think we have to do that because I don't think it would be fair to them to feel that they were in any way exposed by the advice that we've received. So, so who's been appointed to the CHED? Approved that-
The deputy mayor.
Those three?
It's a splinter group.
Councillors Buck, Turner and Lonsdale is, what are you, trustees? Trustees of the Ototahe Community Housing Trust.
Can I just check, like, in the information that we've got, it's actually questioned the appointments process, and we're just cementing that?
No, 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 we're covering, we're confirming. We're confirming it. So we're going outside that original process to basically give the-
So should we probably have a resolution that, that just states that this is being done outside of our normal, as we normally do for these things, we make reference to our policy and say that-
I really don't think that's-
Well, what we've done is confirm the appointments, so, I mean, in a way-
Just gives it another oversight.
It's as, yeah.
But it doesn't say that we've, it doesn't make any reference to the fact that we're going outside our normal policy.
Why do you need to do that?
Because that's what's happened, and if you wanted to protect from it, then-
Okay, but no, 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 I'm not unwilling to sort this out. So confirm the appointments of councillors Buck, Turner and Lonsdale as trustees of the Ototahe Community Trust, in light of, noting the advice that we have received. Because it doesn't actually say it wasn't in accordance with the council's policy, it says that it may not be, so, noting the advice received, that the appointments process may not have been in accordance with- Strictly in accordance with council policy.
We're being asked to make the appointments today.
Yep.
That's what the number three is doing. We've just basically been given a late supplementary report to say, you know, so, I mean, if we're going to confirm the appointments, then surely it's incumbent on us now today to say the process that we've used to do that is this, whatever that might be. It's not in accordance with our normal appointments policy as council. And that's fine, I have no problem doing that. It does just seem weird that we're suddenly asked to make these appointments when they've already-
I'm trying to cover for the fact that our colleagues are involved in a process of appointments next week, and I'm not comfortable to leave them exposed to not having a resolution in support of their appointments.
I agree, like, I'm not arguing with you, but it-
Yes, you are.
It's just weird that we suddenly get a resolution to make appointments to something where we've already delegated the authority to someone else to make appointments.
It's not, it's not weird.
So should we revoke the existing appointments?
No, we can't, we're not, we didn't have the power to make the appointments, so I'm just-
And we still don't.
Yeah, but as a council, we can state that we, we support, okay, well, we'll change the word confirmed to support the appointments of councillors Buck, Turner and Lonsdale as trustees of the Ototahe Community Housing Trust, notwithstanding the process that was followed, how about that? Notwithstanding the process that was followed. Or leaving that, acknowledging the recite and notwithstanding the process that was followed. I just, I kind of want belts and braces approach.
I wouldn't be referring back to the process, to be honest. I think what you had there first covers everything.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it doesn't, it means that we've been very clear about the fact that we haven't got a final position on whether the process was adopted, but we have to look to what it was.
With respect, I don't support something that refers back to the process that was followed. I'm sorry, but what you had up there was absolutely fine, and I wouldn't be referring to the process that was up there before because I think that's making some assumptions, and I'm not prepared to support that.
Sorry, I'm just confused what we're trying to achieve today.
We're trying to-
I'm trying to give our colleagues a little bit of coverage for the fact that it possibly wasn't an ideal process. I don't, I don't want anyone coming afterwards to say that, that our colleagues are in any way not able to undertake the role that they-
And I think the belts and braces is provided by the council supporting it and the advice from staff.
Okay, right, take it out.
Don't need that process issue on there.
Right, okay. So, would someone like to move that?
Question?
Phil, seconded by Glenn.
Question?
Can we put number three separately?
Yep. So, I'm going to put one and two, I'll put one and two, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no, that's carried. Number three, I'll put that separately, all those in favour say aye, those opposed say no.
No.
No, Raf Manji opposed.
Yeah, I'm opposed as well.
And Ellie Jones. So you didn't have to take this out.
Do you want to say why?
And Yanni?
No, no, but it's just unusual that we're trying to fix something, and now we've got people voting against without any understanding why.
I understand why I'm not back here.
Anyway, so, no, I understand perfectly why, so that's fine, so that one's carried as well. And I will, and can you just note that councillors Jones and Manji oppose the second, that's fine. Right, so, I think we're up to lunch, and if we could take a break, be back here at 12.30, you've got a slightly shorter, sorry, 1.30 is what I meant, 1.30. And then we'll deal with the annual plan, and then we'll go into packs.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Right, okay, we are reconvened. So, what I have in front of me is a very happy piece of paper. Well, I'm happy to be reading it, which is the independent auditors' report on the proposed amendments of the 2015-2025 long-term plan. So, thank you to our Chief Financial Officer for putting in the hard yards over the break and producing a good result for us. So, I'm going to do... I'm going to move item number one all by itself because we need to approve item number one before we approve item number five. So, if I understand it, I can move item number one and then I can move the balance of the items as a block. Is that right?
Yes, that would be right. I would draw attention to item number three. That's the change that's flowed through from the capital changes of the amendments in the earlier part of the session.
Right.
It's just a minor change.
Yep. So, that amount has changed.
Approximately $3,000.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's not huge. And the other change that councillors might like to note is that on number six, where it says authorises community board members to receive views presented by people to forums held by community boards during the consultation process, they're not doing that as representatives of the council. They're doing that in order to inform their submission and then they will submit to council. So, but it's just a standard authorisation to have that approved. So, I will move number one and Ref will second that. And I will put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. And then the balance of the items, which are items two... two... sorry, two to eight. I'll move those items with the amendments as identified. Do I have a second after that? Paul Lonsdale. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. I think we have a draft LTP and we're off about to... No, thank you. Thank you. Have a happy Easter.
He brings a mag to bed.
I've actually sent someone out to get them.
But it's a draft AP, not an LTP.
Yeah, it's only a draft AP. But anyway. Right, so now we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the resolution to exclude the public. I'd like to move that. Jimmy, second of Paul. I'll put that motion.